Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Today is Thursday, May 19, 2022. Commissioners Court is meeting in special open session. Would you please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Judge, do you have any opening remarks this morning?
Yeah, just want to welcome everyone to Commissioners Court on behalf of myself and our Commissioners. You're going to see some extremely important and very timely and sensitive topics that we need to address today. So we understand one thing is that we want to keep the public notified step by step so that there won't be any speculation or at least reduce speculation. So we thank you for that. Also want to let you know that we're still our heart for New York and Buffalo and what's going on there. We're still very committed to reaching out. We were planning a vigil at the Healing Garden on Sunday at 7:00. We barely started the preparations. I've reached out to different people and so just want to let you know that I'll be working with the Commissioners to do something beautiful at the Healing Garden, trying our best to connect. I have talked to the bishop here. He happens to be in Rome and he's connecting with a bishop there in New York to see if we could do something very beautiful on behalf of our community. We're a little ahead of that bereavement process and hopefully we can help them in some way to get us to where we are united and strong at this time, but you know, still in pain, but still very strong coming out of a very difficult situation. So we thank you for that and apologize. I just decided to do this last night and just want to convey that to you at this time and I'll be working, like I said, very closely with the Commissioners to do something beautiful for them there in New York. So thank you.
Item number three is public comment. We do not have anybody signed up at this time for public comment. We'll take no action on item number three.
And Caesar, we will be having item number eight. We have some time sensitive things that we need to do, so we'll bring item eight first and then we'll proceed.
Sounds good. Thank you, sir. Item number eight, the addendum to the agenda. Discuss and take appropriate action regarding assistance to migrants entering the community.
Thank you. Just hopefully I can summarize some of the things that have been happening. As you know, when the discussion on Title 42 was going to be lifted, that created some, you know, urgency. We've worked with NGOs, trying our best to do something very humanitarian. We've worked with a lot of different agencies, had the opportunity to go be there on Sunday and see some of the, maybe the glitches and the gaps. And then today, I know with the Commissioners and our support that we'll look at it from a humanitarian standpoint. Yesterday, had the opportunity to meet at the Command Center with almost, I guess, maybe close to 150 agents. Irene and her team were there as well. And what we did is we did the strategy of the what if? If this happens, how do we address it? I think the low hanging fruit right now that we could address quickly is that we need a processing center and we're trying to staff it. We've looked at both the city and the county to see if there's an opportunity to be able to staff it. We're looking at about 35% of the people can actually get their tickets and move on. And we're sort of combining them with sheltering and that's, obviously that creates a lot of pressure. We talked about the importance of the overlay of the possibility of COVID. That would be really difficult. It'd be part of the perfect storm. If we look at everything that has to happen and we've seen New York that has spiked and we're typically maybe three weeks away from following what happens there. So we're very concerned about things taking place since CDC is the one that really, you know, submitted the Title 42. There might be some consideration that we're still not completely out of it. So we don't know what's going to happen at that point in time. So hopefully the public, we also know that a commitment that we made yesterday at the Command Center is that the media needs to be informed and we're trying to see if, we know that certain things happen and they get ahead of us and then it looks like there's a, we're not on top of it and we want to make sure that they say things properly, that we don't alarm the community, that we're in alignment and we're going to be as transparent as possible. So we had, you know, worst case scenario, we would have to find a large place for, if we couldn't handle it, that we would have a large place to be able to address that issue. And then we would be able to, instead of having them throughout the community, we would have one place. So that would be sort of if we weren't able to mitigate some of the efforts in the processing center and some of the others. We also, yesterday, both the mayor and I, and we're going to bring it up to Commissioners Court on issuing an emergency declaration. And the reason for that is not necessarily because of our inability to handle it. So I don't want anybody to believe that it's based strictly on that, but we are able to obtain funding that is necessary to continue a very humanitarian focus. And we want to, we're still getting funding thanks to Betsy and we get funding from FEMA, but FEMA has advised us that by issuing the declaration, then we're more capable of getting the money that we need in order to move forward. We're trying to look at places like Brownsfield that they have a processing center and Betsy and Irene are looking into that to see what is it that they're doing? They seem to be a little successful more. But to give you an example, two days ago, they had 300 apprehensions. We had 1,500 apprehensions. So the numbers are a little different and we'll take that into consideration. So as you could see, you know, we're on top of it. I mean, we're trying our best to make sure that we are able to do something that's very significant and that we're able to understand each thing that's happening. The Command Center will exist throughout from day one when it's lifted. And one of the things I suggested, we also have people like United Way, we have, you know, all the NGOs there. So if anything comes up, we can address it quickly. We have different places and tables where, to give you an example, if we do have people that are out in the street, we have to feed them, we're going to need to have water, we're going to need to, and so we're preparing for worst case scenarios. So this is one of the first times, I can remember in 2019 at the beginning, we didn't have the detention center. We did not have this level of collaboration that we have this time. A lot of caution on what might happen. So like I said, I'm not saying that it will not turn into a very difficult situation for our community, but I can tell you without a doubt that we would do everything possible to anticipate problems or unnecessary situations because we didn't think through them. So it was a great exercise of different scenarios and so we're ready to do that. Christina, I would like for you to talk a little bit about the declaration and our discussions with the city for the public to know what we're trying to do early this morning. And so if you could help us through that process, thank you, Christina.
Good morning, County Judge, Commissioners, Christina Sanchez, Assistant County Attorney. Just as a quick reminder, we were here, of course, back in 2019 as we were moving forward with the pandemic, but just to give everyone an overview. So an emergency declaration, as the judge mentioned, under the law, of course, our county judge has the authority to issue it at moment's notice. I understanding that the judge and of course Mayor Lisa will be planning to issue a declaration separately, one for the city, one for the county, of course, as soon as today. So we are gathering that. As the Commissioners Court may know and recall, we will be bringing back that declaration on Monday. There will be an item on your Commissioners Court agenda so that you can approve its extension. If the Commissioners Court does not approve it, that particular declaration would lapse at that time. And so this morning in the conversation, as the county judge had mentioned, with the city and with our partners over at OEM, Chief Rodriguez, Chief DeGostino, they had indicated that FEMA was very adamant in indicating that the county needed to issue a declaration to secure some of that funding. As the judge had mentioned, the focus, of course, of this particular declaration will be to address and to discuss the humanitarian issue that the community is facing and of course to highlight that we are in need of assistance and resources to facilitate the handling of an increasing
United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Judge, do you have any opening remarks this morning?
Yeah, just want to welcome everyone to Commissioners Court on behalf of myself and our commissioners. You're going to see some extremely important and very timely and sensitive topics that we need to address today. And so, we understand one thing is that we want to keep the public notified step by step so that there won't be any speculation, or at least reduce speculation. So, we thank you for that. Also, I want to let you know that we're still our heart for New York and Buffalo and what's going on there. We're still very committed to reaching out. We were planning a vigil at the Healing Garden on Sunday at 7:00. We barely started the preparations. I've reached out to different people. So, just want to let you know that I'll be working with the commissioners to do something beautiful at the Healing Garden, trying our best to connect. I have talked to the bishop here. He happens to be in Rome and he's connecting with a bishop there in New York to see if we could do something very beautiful on behalf of our community. We're a little ahead of that bereavement process and hopefully we can help them in some way to get us to where we are, united and strong at this time, but you know, still in pain, but still very strong, coming out of a very difficult situation. So, we thank you for that and apologize. I just decided to do this last night and just want to convey that to you at this time. And I'll be working, like I said, very closely with the commissioners to do something beautiful for them there in New York. So, thank you.
Item number three is public comment. We do not have anybody signed up at this time for public comment. We'll take no action on item number three.
And Caesar, we will be having item number eight. We have some time-sensitive things that we need to do, so we'll bring item eight first and then we'll proceed.
Yes, sir. Sounds good. Thank you, sir. Item number eight, the addendum to the agenda. Discuss and take appropriate action regarding assistance to migrants entering the community.
Thank you. Just hopefully I can summarize some of the things that have been happening. As you know, when the discussion on Title 42 was going to be lifted, that created some, you know, urgency. We've worked with NGOs, trying our best to do something very humanitarian. We've worked with a lot of different agencies, had the opportunity to go be there on Sunday and see some of the, maybe the glitches and the gaps. And then today, I know with the commissioners and our support that we'll look at it from a humanitarian standpoint. Yesterday, I had the opportunity to meet at the Command Center with almost, I guess, maybe close to 150 agents. Irene and her team were there as well. And what we did is we did the strategy of the what-if. If this happens, how do we address it? I think the low-hanging fruit right now that we could address quickly is that we need a processing center and we're trying to staff it. We've looked at both the city and the county to see if there's an opportunity to be able to staff it. We're looking at about 35% of the people can actually get their tickets and move on. And we're sort of combining them with sheltering and that's, obviously, that creates a lot of pressure. We talked about the importance of the overlay of the possibility of COVID. That would be really difficult. It'd be part of the perfect storm. If we look at everything that has to happen and we've seen New York that has spiked and we're typically maybe three weeks away from following what happens there, so we're very concerned about things taking place. Since CDC is the one that really, you know, submitted the Title 42, there might be some consideration that we're still not completely out of it. So, we don't know what's going to happen at that point in time. So, hopefully the public, we also know that a commitment that we made yesterday at the Command Center is that the media needs to be informed and we're trying to see if, we know that certain things happen and they get ahead of us and then it looks like there's a, we're not on top of it. And we want to make sure that they say things properly, that we don't alarm the community, that we're in alignment, and we're going to be as transparent as possible. So, we had, you know, worst-case scenario, we would have to find a large place for, if we couldn't handle it, that we would have a large place to be able to address that issue. And then we would be able to, instead of having them throughout the community, we would have one place. So, that would be sort of, if we weren't able to mitigate some of the efforts in the processing center and some of the others. We also, yesterday, both the mayor and I, and we're going to bring it up to Commissioners Court, on issuing an emergency declaration. And the reason for that is not necessarily because of our inability to handle it, so I don't want anybody to believe that it's based strictly on that, but we are able to obtain funding that is necessary to continue a very humanitarian focus. And we want to, we're still getting funding thanks to Betsy and we get funding from FEMA, but FEMA has advised us that by issuing the declaration, then we're more capable of getting the money that we need in order to move forward. We're trying to look at places like Brownsville that they have a processing center and Betsy and Irene are looking into that to see what is it that they're doing. They seem to be a little successful more. But to give you an example, two days ago, they had 300 apprehensions. We had 1,500 apprehensions. So, the numbers are a little different and we'll take that into consideration. So, as you could see, you know, we're on top of it. I mean, we're trying our best to make sure that we are able to do something that's very significant and that we're able to understand each thing that's happening. The Command Center will exist throughout from day one when it's lifted. And one of the things I suggested, we also have people like United Way, we have, you know, all the NGOs there. So, if anything comes up, we can address it quickly. We have different places and tables where, give you an example, if we do have people that are out in the street, we have to feed them, we're going to need to have water, we're going to need to, and so we're preparing for worst-case scenarios. So, this is one of the first times I can remember in 2019, at the beginning, we didn't have the detention center. We did not have this level of collaboration that we have this time. A lot of caution on what might happen. So, like I said, I'm not saying that it will not turn into a very difficult situation for our community, but I can tell you without a doubt that we would do everything possible to anticipate problems or unnecessary situations because we didn't think through them. So, it was a great exercise of different scenarios and so we're ready to do that. Christina, I would like for you to talk a little bit about the declaration and our discussions with the city for the public to know what we're trying to do early this morning. And so, if you could help us through that process. Thank you, Christina.
Good morning, County Judge, Commissioners, Christina Sanchez, Assistant County Attorney. Just as a quick reminder, we were here, of course, back in 2019 as we were moving forward with the pandemic, but just to give everyone an overview. So, an emergency declaration, as the judge mentioned, under the law, of course, our county judge has the authority to issue it at moments' notice. I understanding that the judge and of course Mayor Lisa will be planning to issue a declaration separately, one for the city, one for the county, of course, as soon as today. So, we are gathering that. As the Commissioners Court may know and recall, we will be bringing back that declaration on Monday. There will be an item on your Commissioners Court agenda so that you can approve its extension. If the Commissioners Court does not approve it, that particular declaration would lapse at that time. And so, this morning in the conversation, as the county judge had mentioned, with the city and with our partners over at OEM, Chief Rodriguez, Chief DeGostino, they had indicated that FEMA was very adamant in indicating that the county needed to issue a declaration to secure some of that funding. As the judge had mentioned, the focus, of course, of this particular declaration will be to address and to discuss the humanitarian issue that the community is facing and, of course, to highlight that we are in need of assistance and resources to facilitate the handling of an increase of individuals that will be coming to El Paso, but to ensure that it's safe and it's orderly for those individuals and then, of course, for the community as well. So, we will be getting that together and issuing out that declaration today and, of course, with the court's acquiescence and decision on Monday, your final approval for that as well. So, that's a quick summary on that.
Thank you very much, Christina. And I'll leave it out to the Commissioners. Are there questions?
I've got a real quick question. The funding that you're talking about, is that part of that $150 million that FEMA has been talking about providing for food and shelter that we could tap into regularly or is it a different pot of funding?
It's a different.
Okay.
So, right now, we're already tapping into the Emergency Food and Shelter Fund. The one that Commissioner, we discussed on the telephone call yesterday, the 150 million, there's a $150 million fund that has been set up under the Emergency Food and Shelter. So far, about 40 million of it has been used. It has certain restrictions that what we're being told is this other funding by declaring an emergency that it'll open up general FEMA emergency funding, which is less restrictive. One example on the current funding, and I don't know if it'll apply to the other funding that becomes available, but one example is I asked if we could purchase a facility, even if the facility was cheaper to purchase than to lease over a period of time, we could not purchase a facility. That's a restriction under the current funding. That's an example. And so, this would open us up to have other opportunities and additional funding, more than what's available currently.
And what's the limit on the funding that we could tap in? Do we know?
We do not know a limit.
Yeah, they were very encouraging. FEMA felt that we were getting funding from this other bucket, but they felt that this would open up some much more opportunities. Even the processing center, Brownsville, is right now using some of both funding. So, that would help us to pay for that. So, you know, we're very fortunate that we do have someone actually here in office here representing. He's been here like three months now, Betsy, and he's been wanting us to get further funding. And so, hopefully that'll help us.
And this is money that would be reimbursed to us after we show costs, right?
Correct. The county would put the funding out and then we would be reimbursed. Right now, we do this on the transit and then we get reimbursed quarterly. Lori manages that for us.
And according to Congresswoman Escobar, she's really working hard on doing the pre-payment because some of the NGOs that need help can't pay for it. And so, that limits them. And so, I'm hoping that that sort of comes together, that we're able to provide funding prior to so that we can get things done a little quicker. We're up to, this is Monday, if it happens and it's lifted, this is Monday that's going to take place. So, it's not, we don't have a lot of time. So, we were encouraged to get that declaration now today and then, like you said, Christina, get it, get Commissioners to support that because it lapses after seven days.
It lapses after seven days and so we'll get this on the court's agenda for Monday.
And we can't do a preapproval before it?
You're not posted today for a preapproval, but that's why the judge, you know, when it's a declaration as such, he can issue it immediately.
And then you guys will support that?
Yes, sir.
Well, we have to vote on it, so I can't. Sorry.
You're hoping we'll support it?
Yeah, I'm hoping it.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you, Christina. So, Betsy, back to you. I know we have a presentation from Endeavors who have had a lot of success in running some of these operations. And as you remember, also John Martin from the Opportunity Center is interested in helping us sort of manage it. I know that Ruben Garcia asked in a press conference that the county step in for Casa Refugiados and we're trying to look at that. He doesn't get any federal funding or paid employees, so that's a consideration that if we did that, you know, so there's going to be things on the table that we have to look at and unnecessarily, you know, answer today, but there will be some things placed on the table for us to assess. So, you want to introduce our Endeavor group?
Judge, Endeavors isn't actually, they're tied up. They'll be here in just a few minutes.
Okay.
But if I may also talk to the court about some of the things that Judge, based on what we've been discussing. So, the county has been also looking at different options. I want the court to be aware. We're looking at facilities that could be used for a processing center. We're working very closely with Customs and Border Patrol on what is being done in other communities that is helping to streamline the processing. So, for example, in Laredo, there's a piece of technology where one of the NGOs in that case has provided tablets inside the detention center. And there's a QR code that migrants can scan and it takes them right to the processing, the processing center's webpage to collect information as they're about to be transferred out. And so, that's, they said that that has helped streamline significantly. Brownsville is processing, I believe, 1,800, the processing center is processing 1,800 people a day without requirement for shelter. So, they literally are coming from the holding over to the processing center immediately, as the judge explained, immediately getting transacted to get their travel set up. And then they're, it's like a hub. They're either going to the airport, they're going to the bus station, or they're going on those buses to other locations to get flights out, depending on the airport capacity and where they're going. We're going to actually tour that model and see how it's working there as quickly as we possibly can. We're coordinating that right now. And those are all possible models. We are working with Office of Emergency Management in the city, but I just want us to be as prepared as humanly possible. And whatever information we get, we'll openly share with our partners or anybody who wants to help participate, if the court is supportive of the county standing this type of model up. And again, we would work to have all of this, we would have to front the funding and then get reimbursed through FEMA.
And Betsy, if you could look at, one of the things that seemed to hold back the process is that the cash, that they had cash. And what we want them is to convert it quickly into a card. And I know San Antonio, their airport has kiosk where they can put the money in, get a card and, you know, so they don't carry cash and also it's not accepted at the airports. If you could look into that.
Yes, sir. We'll get information on those kiosks and we'll also look to see if any of our local banks could provide the same type of machine or service. Because a lot of the issue is that you do need a credit card to book certain things online and you can't just do it with cash.
And as we're waiting for Endeavors, I would like, because we have such a great person in Irene. Irene, would you like to comment maybe some of the things that you saw that would enhance this conversation?
May I ask a really quick question while Irene makes her way up? So, Betsy, in the Brownsville model, who's actually helping to make the arrangements for the travel? Is that being done through that same QR code or the QR code is just to help collect information?
The QR codes at Laredo, where they scan it and then it already frontloads the information over on the processing center. It's my understanding the processing center is being ran in Brownsville by OEM.
OEM.
But there's an NGO right across the street also helping to provide like refreshments and just making it comforting and welcoming. And, but the OEM is actually operating the processing center.
So, are they the ones helping to make the travel arrangements?
Yes, yes ma'am. And really quick too, before I turn it over to Irene, this is also, when you see the presentation from Endeavors this morning, I did email it to all of you. We just received it last night, so it's not in the backup yet, but will be. It is another option versus OEM or us running a processing center. We could propose, while we're waiting for Endeavors, they said that they could be stood up within 48 to 72 hours.
And then the county would be responsible for providing funding to Endeavors and then the county would be seeking reimbursement from FEMA?
Yes, ma'am. And actually, it's my understanding too that they could also...
Directly request?
Directly. If they can front the funding, that's been, that's what the judge was saying with the Congresswoman, so many of them cannot front the funding. But if the cases that they couldn't, we would and then get reimbursed.
Thank you, Commissioner Leon.
Yes, Irene, before you address us, just a couple of points that I wanted to make sure that we are addressing, the unaccompanied minors, that was a big issue last time. I know that Fort Bliss, I heard the Congresswoman speaking this morning, that Fort Bliss is completely out of the picture this time, that we're looking at that. And hopefully, because I know that the thought process is the adults, but those kids coming across is going to be, I anticipate quite a few.
You know that it's, when you talk to Chief Chavez, who's done an amazing job, the single adults is the biggest challenge. That's about 65% of the challenge. The single adults, because it's under DHS and they have places for them and the numbers have dropped for some reason, she feels very comfortable with the unaccompanied children. When I was there, there was maybe 50 and 50, 50 girls and 50 boys and they seem more handable and especially with DHS stepping in and they certify their shelters now that they're sending them to. So, she didn't feel like last time, that it was something that was more manageable, but obviously that's what we keep an eye on because these are very young from, I saw maybe, maybe six months old to, you know, 15, 16 years old. And so, we are keeping an eye on them. They seem to be more manageable than last time. So, I think we could feel a little bit more comfortable, but that's a key thing to look at. So, thank you for bringing that up. Irene, you want to go ahead and talk?
Yes. Good morning, Irene Malenzuela, for the record with Community Services. I think Betsy covered it very well and you did too, Judge, but just something real brief to add. I have been in communication with Andrea Ramirez with Project Amistad. Right now, they provide two buses with routes throughout the day to help with the shelter pickup to bus depots and the airport, but they're ready to scale up if we need them to. And so, with the effort that we're working on with processing centers and coordinating that, they are ready to scale up to a few more routes if we need them to and more buses if we need them to. Also, OEM is also coordinating with us on whether they can mobilize San Metro in the city to scale up that transportation if we need more than the smaller 15-passenger buses that Project Amistad provides. So, some of those things are already in the works. We already have an existing contract with Project Amistad for humanitarian transport. We are seeking reimbursement for that as we speak since last year and we can continue to do that with the existing Emergency Food and Shelter funding. Again, with the emergency declaration, as you and Betsy mentioned, that frees up a different pot of money. There's existing funding, that 150 million that we're already tapping into for transportation.
Thank you. One great number that, from the Sheriff's Department, I think it was 26,000 individuals were transferred. And so, they requested yesterday at the Command Center and I asked Betsy to look into that to expand it. It's been such a, very quietly. I mean, you know, they're helping with the Stone Garden Grants to transfer, but that's a big number of help and 26,000 that have gone through the sheriffs and been able to be transported. So, very proud that they stepped in like that and we're trying to look at that as part of the piece of, you know, how do we improve that? They just requested to see if there was more they could do.
Also, Lori from our Office of New Americans is in constant communication with other ONA offices throughout the state, including the ones on the border, to kind of gather input from them and feedback about best practices, how they're doing it. And so, we're also going to get on a call before we hopefully fly out to Brownsville. We're going to get on a call with the Brownsville folks ahead so that we can kind of get a feel of what's going on. And then if we can get there to tour it and look at the facility and how they're processing it, it'll help us more set up here in the short term.
And I want to thank the constables that stepped up and they say they're ready. And I think we have Chief Esparsa on the line, sort of looking at it the way we did with the pandemic and the vaccinations and he's ready to help out in any possible way. So, very, very proud how the county is all coming together. Irene, thank you for your leadership as well on that.
Of course.
Thank you, Irene.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
And Judge, we do have Endeavors trying to log in. If you can give me just one second.
Sure.
We have Mr. Miranda on the line.
Thank you.
Mr. Ben Miranda, welcome.
How are you doing, Judge? Good morning. Can you hear me?
We sure can and thank you for joining us. Endeavors has become quite a partner and to rely on. So, thank you for this presentation.
Yes, so as Ms. Betsy Keller mentioned, we provided this very extensive presentation that really gives you a really good perspective on Endeavors' capability to be able to rapidly deploy to support a migrant sheltering operation. We do have the capability to be able to stand up an operation within, with fully staffing, fully operational, within 42 to 78 hours. Really, the capabilities on this presentation will guide you to really showing our history, what we've been able to do in the last couple of years in supporting multiple sheltering operations throughout the country. But specifically, slides 19 to the end really focus on what we can do to tailor our capacity to build up, to support this initiative. This presentation does not provide you with a cost analysis, but if one is needed and if one is requested, we could immediately provide you with a cost analysis of what we, what we're looking at to be able to support the community here in El Paso. I could tell you currently, we are also providing this type of support in the city of San Antonio. We've done this in Dallas. We've done this in other areas in Texas. And to one of the comments that was made by Commissioner Leon regarding the unaccompanied children, Endeavors also currently serves unaccompanied children in our Pecos Children's Center where we have approximately 2,000 beds. And we also collaborate with the Office of Refugee Resettlement to serve unaccompanied children. So, we do have the capability. We're subject matter experts in serving this population and we are here to be able to provide solutions and support for our community here in El Paso.
Ben, we have the presentation up. Do you see it?
Yes, I do.
You may let us know when you advance the slides, please.
Okay, go ahead. So, you know, it is a long presentation, but what I really want is, this first slide just really gives you a really good perspective of who we are and the leadership that really focuses on, on providing this level of support for here at Endeavors. If you go to the next slide, please. So, really, this just focuses on really what our mission is and really what it focuses on is really, you know, wanting you to know that we focus on passionately serving vulnerable populations in crisis with a very innovative and personalized approach. We're founded on our core values to always, always serve everybody with accountability, integrity, care, compassion, a full focus on teamwork, commit, really focus on commitment to making a difference and a focus in community involvement. Next slide, please. So, we are a nonprofit organization that provides healthcare, education, homelessness support, senior citizen support, and childcare to low-income families. We were established in 1969 and we are headquartered in San Antonio, Texas. We're a faith-based organization and we have offices in Dallas, Houston, El Paso, Laredo. And we currently operate also throughout 19 states to include Puerto Rico. We focus on four pillars of service throughout our communities, which focuses on community and family services, caring for veterans and their families, emergency services, and migrant services. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. So, really focused on a little bit of migrant support services. We do focus on providing pre- and post-disaster goods and shelter services where Endeavors has the capability to fully operate and really look at operations, logistics, planning, finance, and administrative support with really a focus on shelter management, whether it's congregate or non-congregate. We really focus also on turnkey shelter support where we can take an open space and turn it into a sheltering area to serve vulnerable populations with an array of services. We focus on meal services, transportation, and security services. We also provide isolation shelters if needed due to the COVID situation. And we also have a very robust logistic and supply management system, vendor management, deployable sources where we can bring into a community, you know, for example, mobile showers, toilets, home washing sinks, and anything else that needs to be deployed to serve our clients. And we also focus on case management and also recreation, education, opportunities if needed. Please, next slide, please. This just gives you a perspective. In 2001, we really focused on providing 7 million hours of services across 18 states and Puerto Rico. We had the privilege and honor to serve 80,000 people. We had the privilege and honor to serve 80,000 people throughout our communities with all our lines of services. 2021 really represented the largest expansion of services in our 52-year history, and our services focused on reflecting in our culture and the passion that we have for people. Next slide, please. This is just the timeline of our emergency services process, you know, how extensive, the extensive experience that we have in providing emergency staffing to various emergency operations from 2014 to date. And it's a very busy slide, but you could just see we, a lot of these focus operations, dealing with shelter operations, really focus on serving migrant, our migrant community. Next slide, please. So the next couple of slides, I won't go too much into detail, but this really focuses a lot of our responsibilities. This one is specific, is when we supported the Office of Refugee and Resettlement from 2014 and 2017, where we helped deploy our emergency services to help with the Lackland Air Force Base Unaccompanied Children Influx Shelter. And then also at the bottom, we also served on the ANA Influx Shelter. So as you can see, it's just, we do have the capability, we have the experience to be able to serve communities during these situations. Next slide, please. And it's just, it's just a slide that really focuses on the capability and support that we provided during Hurricane Harvey in 2017, and it just gives you some really good bullet points of, you know, the capability of us deploying our team members. We were able to deploy up to 30 reservists consisting of various skill sets to really mobilize disaster sheltering operations. And then the rest of the bullet points really focuses on the level of support that we were able to employ into the local community to support, to really support the community after the disasters of Hurricane Harvey. Next slide, please. And then also, this is just a really good representation of what we were able to support in Torneo during the influx shelter there as well, and from 2018 and 2019, where we had about 1,600 staff members helping that operation there and serving the children in Torneo. Next slide, please. And then this is a focus, just a really history focus on what we were able to support in the city of Dallas regarding us activating and deploying about 42, 45 staff members within 72 hours. So again, it just shows the capability that we have to be able to activate our emergency services staff and deploy them within hours to be able to operate within 48 to 72 hours. Next slide, please. Another support that we provided to Dallas, the Office of Emergency Response in 2020, where we supported Dallas during Hurricane Laura, and we operated hotel shelters, which were non-congregate as well. And we were able to serve approximately 3,000 disaster evacuees on a daily basis under this operation. Next slide, please. And then more recently, we also deployed our emergency services staff to Mayfield, Kentucky after the tornado. We were able to stand up and implement supply procurement and delivery to the communities, assisted with supply and inventory management, focused on logistics. We operated the disaster call center, and we also focused on disaster case management as well. Next slide, please. City of Dallas again, in 2022, where we helped and assisted the city of Dallas with inclement weather shelters. And again, it just gives you a lot of really good information of our capability and response efforts. Next slide, please. And then also more recently, which I believe, Judge, you had to keep the opportunity to visit one of these emergency family reception centers when we were operating here in El Paso. So with, in collaboration with the Department of Homeland Security, we operated eight emergency family reception centers in Texas and in Arizona, where we activated these emergency family reception centers within 72 hours to provide services and support to migrant families. In the time period that we operated these emergency families, state reception centers, we served over 43,941 individuals, which equal to about 15,000 families. So we had medical coverage, transportation, COVID testing, access to meals, to clothing, case management, security. So this was a very robust operation that we did for a short period in support of migrant families here in Texas and Arizona. Next slide, please. And then this is the Pecos Children's Center that I was talking about earlier. So we, in collaboration with the Office of Refugee Resettlement, we do operate a congregate shelter, where we started operating this Pecos Children's Center in April of last year. And to date, we've served approximately 23,000 unaccompanied children. We have about the capability to be able to bed up to 2,000 children, but we provide them with education, meals, case management, medical, clothing, access to religious services. We offer pet music, therapy. So we continue to operate this children's center in Pecos to date. Next slide. And the next one is really what we're currently doing with the city of San Antonio to support migrant individuals. So we are operating in collaboration with the city of San Antonio an isolation care facility, where here we focus on emergency services, and our emergency services reservists took command and coordination of operations of a non-congregate shelter. And we operate that shelter 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And these are the list of things that we provide. We currently have the capacity to be able to operate 200 rooms for migrant individuals and families. We focus on intake and discharge, transportation services. We've served over 1,000 homeless individuals and over 500 migrants to date. We've implemented very strict COVID-19 protocols and procedures. We do hyposanitation. We provide transportation, translation services, meal transportation. We provide three daily meals and snacks. We provide clothing. And we do case management and coordination with conjunction with the city of San Antonio. So this is probably something very similar to the capability that we would do here in El Paso, very similar to what we're doing in San Antonio. The next couple of slides really focus, next slide, please, really focus on our capability and approach. And really, and this is what I'll end on this slide, Judge and commissioners. You know, during our mobilization process, Endeavor will initiate four key sections via to our response. And the first one is operations. We'll establish command, control, and coordination of the operation by ensuring schedules are in place for shelter operations. We will establish different areas needed within the shelter and proceed to identify sections of areas. Endeavor will ensure all necessary equipment and assets are placed in designated dormitory, feeding, recreation, and hygiene areas in order to be ready, prepared to serve clients. We will provide daily communications with corporate command centers, site incident command centers in El Paso, Canada. The second key component is we will focus on logistics. Logistics will start the process of mobilizing shelter support, mobile assets and supplies. Assets will be activated and transported for placements by logistics within 72 hours prior to mobilization. The third key component is our planning. Planning will have a very robust concept of operation and an incident action plan for every 12-hour operational period to include data, a flow, operational objectives, and permanent shelter information that's needed by the county and any other community collaborating that needs this information. And then the last four key section that we will focus on is the finance and administration. Finance will calculate a daily burn rate based off of shelter expenditures as well as contained costs associated with the shelter. Administration will start the process of mobilizing shelter support staff by reaching out via our mass notification system. We will activate reservists for deployment within the ability to activate and deploy staff within 48 to 72 hours to start this operation. And then the rest of the slides, Judge and Commissioner, it's really more Endeavor's ability to lead the process of what a crowd needs to support this operation here in El Paso. And then any questions?
Yep. Ben, just wanted to ask you on, do you have any sort of understanding of where or a particular site or something with your knowledge and that you have here in El Paso that would make sense for that? I know that you talked about even they were using a parking area for the processes component at one of the other places. Give us some ideas as to what, like, what could we look at on the short term and then also the long term if the numbers continue to increase?
For short term, and even for long term, and this is more in being conscious of cost, you know, from the cost-effective analysis. You know, if there is a location that the county has, or even if the city has, that is vacant, that we can utilize, that would drastically lower the cost of operations, because the county in or the city already owns the property or has a collaborative partner that's willing to allow the use of the property. If that's not the case, then, like many other communities, you know, like in San Antonio, in San Antonio, we are renting out an area of a hotel that partnered with us, where we've leased 200 rooms, where we serve our migrant families and individuals. So it's all dependent, Judge, that if the county or the city has a location that's vacant and we can operate and to utilize, that'll be very cost-effective. And if not, of course, we could always lease space, but the cost will increase.
I was gonna ask, Betsy, maybe, would you have staff to, you know, we've considered certain places around the Coliseum. Do you have staff that would sort of tell us a little bit about the viability, how feasible it would be as we're looking at that? Because I think we need to keep going, sort of understanding the challenges that we do have to look at something pretty quickly. So, Betsy, go ahead.
Judge, I wanted to ask too, are we talking about a processing center or a shelter?
I think.
Because they're very different needs.
No, I think we've made it very clear that the one is a quick thing, is the processing center, get that going. But I think from the numbers and what, you know, Chief Chavez is talking about, we better be ready for larger numbers, and then how are we going to handle that? And I'd hate to get the people in a situation out there in the community, then try to figure out what we're going to do at that point. So I think we need to be prepared for both.
So the first option is a processing center.
Exactly.
That's what we need to stand up the fastest. And it's my understanding, Ben, that the concept, the best concept is one that's either near where individuals are being released or with also easy access to the transportation hubs.
That's correct.
I think conceptually, the most important thing is that we have a bigger place instead of having a lot of people, because obviously, the synergisms are different. I was asked to reach out to, for like, for example, the Sun Bowl. Would that be a place? I mean, we've done things like that when it's a weather-related situation. So I would thought maybe your expertise, Ben, would help partner with Betsy to look at different places.
We definitely, we definitely could do that and look at a few locations where either the city or the county owns property, or we could easily, Border Patrol's already actually identified some properties that they've identified as vacant. Just, they've mentioned a couple to me that might be good processing centers, but not necessarily shelters.
The shelter, yes.
And I do think we need to follow up with Ruben about his extending the option of operating the facility that he currently operates. That may be an option, and I don't know, as you mentioned, Judge, I don't know what full capacity would be.
So it's a big, do you know, Ben, I think you and I have been there at Casa Refugiados. Do you know what the full capacity would be there?
At this point, I don't recall the full capacity there is, Judge.
Yeah, remember, it was quite a, like a thousand? And then we had to have protocol because of COVID that reduced it to about 300. And so I don't know where we're at.
And one of the things, and I also want to highlight that, in the processing center, what we would focus on is, you know, to prevent individuals, if someone, if an individual comes to the processing center, we want to be able to connect them to transportation services as quick as possible. So the least that we can place that individual into a shelter, the better for us. So our goal at the processing center is to connect them with navigation services, to connect them with transportation services. So if their place is not to stay in El Paso, we want to get, we want to help them to get out of El Paso as soon as possible, and that starts at the processing center.
And we also recognize that some get delayed, you know, they're able to do it. They've got the sponsor, but the flights aren't ready. So then there's a few, a percentage that sort of stay in, they do need a shelter, they don't have the money to stay at a hotel.
Yes, sir.
So there's that combination of, Betsy, you were saying that there was cots or something. Sometimes they could be there for five, six hours waiting to see if there's a flight or there's a, you know, way to get on a bus. And so it has that little, you know, sort of area where we do need to shelter as well as the processing center. So as you could see, I mean, we've got, I mean, a lot of these things were, they're sort of still in the draft form. And then today, we're going to be looking at a lot of details, trying to figure out what can and cannot happen. But obviously, your partnership, Ben, and your knowledge of things that you've done in other places is going to be extremely helpful.
Ben, how much space would you need for a processing center? What's the space that we should be looking at?
You know, for, based on the populations that we're seeing here in El Paso, and I'm just guestimating, and I know that's not appropriate terminology, but I would venture to say, you know, we do need a capability to be able to assist people. To, you know, we can, you know, we know that there are flights that day. We need an area where people can rest, where we cooperate in need, and then a few offices. I would venture to say about 3,000, 4,000 square feet. And again, and I'm just estimating, you know, we would have to, and not every building that's 3,000, 4,000 square feet is, has the capability to do this. So we would have to put eyes on the location to make sure that the location has the necessities, you know, that the restrooms are working. Do they, maybe, do they have showers? Someone wants to shower, they can shower. You know, can we implement appropriate security measures that we need to separate, you know, the men from the women, single men, and the single women? So there's a lot of safety aspects that we need to consider as well. So that's why there's not a fixed number, but I would venture to say about that square footage that I provided.
Betsy, that was your estimation from Public Works?
I think it depends on the numbers, but if we could work with how many individuals are being brought in at one time. What I checked with Public Works is like, what is the waiting space per person when you have like a chairs, like chairs sitting for people to be waiting? And I think 3,000 to 4,000 square feet would work with, or even, you know, well, yes, 3,000 to 4,000 square feet would work.
And Ben, one of the caveats is that we have such a great partnership that Chief Chavez really said, you know, "I will never overwhelm you." It's not like, okay, everybody, you know, just go out there to the processing center, that they would be in contact with us. And they said, okay, you can handle 250, you let 50, we can send 50 more. So she says that's very important, because you don't want to create a situation at the processing center that is just massive, you know, and then you.
No, we don't want to create, yes, sir, we don't want to create a bottleneck. And I can tell you this, we do have great working relationships with the Border Patrol and Department of Homeland Security, that we will make sure that open communication continues and there's a lot of transparency of what we're doing to make sure that we don't create these challenges.
Excellent.
Judge, could I ask, Ben, in your other operations, are you all directly contracted with FEMA for reimbursement? Or is somebody else paying you, and then you all getting reimbursed? Or the other agency getting reimbursed?
In the city of San Antonio, we are gaining, we're being directly paid by the city of San Antonio, and the city of San Antonio is seeking the reimbursement.
Okay, thank you.
Excellent. Well, as you could see, that was our intent today, was to sort of get our commissioners up to speed and everybody else at Public, as what's happening, and a lot of things that need to happen. But Betsy, you'll just keep us, the commissioners and myself, informed as things begin to develop and the steps that we need to take. I think Monday, I think we need to make some very assertive decisions on what you come up with between now and Monday.
So I do want to ask the court, as we go to work through these options, I mean, our first priority. first priority is gonna be looking at a processing center, working closely with Office of Emergency Management. We are gonna be reaching out to Ruben to see exactly what his intent is, and what his thoughts are, for the second piece of this, the longer-term sheltering, what other options we may need. But I do want to make sure that there's general consensus or support to proceed.
Yeah.
Yes. Okay.
You have consensus. Betsy, thank you. Irene and Lori, thank you so much for your help. It's, I feel really proud as to how you step up and how the county steps up, so thank you, thank you for that. Caesar?
So we'll be taking no action on item number eight?
We'll go back to the regular agenda.
Item number four from the regular agenda. Receive a presentation regarding the county's Quality Texas Foundation Malcolm Baldrige Commitment Level Application.
Betsy?
Judge, Commissioners, I am very pleased to present Dr. Lizeli Madrigal. As you know, Dr. Madrigal started with us, it's just a couple, a little over a couple years ago, and we put out, we put out several projects for her to achieve in a short time. One of them was applying for Malcolm Baldrige, but we also asked her to work with departments to help set up key performance indicators. We asked her to help facilitate the strategic plan. We also asked her to, I'm drawing a blank on the fourth pillar, but.
EPXE.
To set up our own internal program to help us with continuous improvement. And I just, I can't say enough, she's a one-woman show, but she's an amazing one-woman show. She's worked so diligently, and she really knows how to use our resources. She's gonna give a lot of credit to the team, I know, but I want to really commend her for her leadership in getting us to where we are today on this process. And with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Dr. Madrigal.
Yeah, and I thank you for that, because she's done an amazing job. Just a little caveat that I talked to Dr. Madrigal about, is that we made a commitment sometime back, that the mayor of Juarez, the mayor of Las Cruces, the mayor of El Paso, and myself, would share strategic planning, because we feel like we don't know what the other person's doing, and so I've asked, as part of this Malcolm Baldrige, one of the things that, I had been an examiner for Malcolm Baldrige, they always ask, well, who are your partners, and how are you dealing with them? And the partners are always the other government agencies around you. And so I think it would fit in very nicely with, like I said, that's the first question is, who do you work with, and what are you doing about it? And I think that would close that gap if she were, and it's not something very complicated, it's just a matter of every one of us sharing our strategic plan, and then Dr. Madrigal looking at the touch points to say, well, this one's similar, you know, how can we work together?
He's already, Judge, you mentioned it, and she's already been talking to me about it. She's already taking off, sir, and we're really excited about that opportunity.
I just wanted to make sure that.
Bring you back more information on that.
Dr. Madrigal, it's all yours.
Good morning. Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. Betsy, thank you for the kind words. For the record, Lizeli Madrigal with County Administration. Today, I'm pleased to have the opportunity to present the Malcolm Baldrige National Quality Award and its purpose this morning. I think its purpose is very, very important. Next slide, please. Oh, I have the next slide. There we go. The Malcolm Baldrige Quality, National Quality Award is the nation's highest presidential honor for performance excellence. Performance excellence is gauged by an organization's innovation, improvement, and visionary leadership. The award was established in 1987 to enhance competitiveness and performance in U.S. businesses. And since its creation, 106 organizations have been awarded this honor. Next slide, please. So why embark on the Baldrige process, and what's the benefit? A few reasons include improved performance and achieved world-class service, and results that impact our residents, our county residents and businesses, by understanding our own processes and improving these processes. To objectively clarify the organization's strengths and weaknesses via detailed analysis, similar to a SWOT analysis, in terms of what we do great, our best practices, and in terms of areas for improvement. I include a quote by Fort Collins, which received the Performance Excellence Award in 2017. Thanks to the Baldrige, the city is more efficient and effective, this providing residents and businesses with world-class service, and greater trust and transparency in local government. And this directly aligns to the vision and mission of the county. Next slide, please. Other award recipients in government include the city of Ford of Colorado Springs, Florida, received the honor in 2007. CEO of Texas received the honor in 2012. And the most recent recipient is the city of Fort Collins, as I shared earlier, from Colorado in 2017. Next slide, please. In order to be eligible for the Baldrige, you have to meet, be under one of these categories, we fall under government, and meet the following conditions, which include be headquartered in the United States, exist for over a year, and review of operational practices available for examination, that means that the organization is open to this examination, be able to share information on Baldrige criteria categories, and other requirements specific to each of the sectors. Next slide, please. The primary goal of the program is to encourage organizations to improve their processes by having a very in-depth understanding and a self-assessment of this. When we embarked in this process, I looked over the value, the process, and I determined it was an evaluation and a SWOT analysis, and again, a very detailed, and I'm gonna say the word detail with capital letters, because it was extremely detailed process, of all of our systems, and I'll go more into what specifically they looked at in the application. Next slide, please. The criteria includes leadership, strategic planning, customer market focus, measurement analysis and knowledge management, human resource focus, process management or operations, and the results that relate back to these six categories. Next slide, please. So in terms of customer-focused results, the application looks at customer satisfaction and dissatisfaction, and how we engage the community, our primary and secondary customers, primary customers being the residents and businesses of El Paso County, and internal customers being our staff. Products and service-related, products and service performance, what we deliver and what, how we deliver the products and services the county offers, and financial and market results in terms of financial performance. Next slide, please. Next is human resources results. This looks at work systems, performance and effectiveness, employee learning and development, and employee well-being, and again, satisfaction and dissatisfaction. Again, this piece of engagement and engaging on our internal customers. Organizational effectiveness results, operational performance of key value creation and support processes, and how well these processes are integrated into other aspects of what we do. Accomplishments of strategy and action plans, how well we deploy and implement our strategy or strategic plan. Next slide, please. And governance, governance and social responsibilities in terms of fiscal accountability, ethical behavior of stakeholders, and the trusted government of the organization, regulatory and legal compliance, organizational citizenship, and support of key communities. Next slide, please. The greatest benefit of embarking and completing this application is a written assessment of strengths, opportunities for improvement, which is reviewed by a team of examiners. And what we receive back includes key themes and summary, organizational-specific comments, again, in areas of best practice and areas for improvement, and individualized scoring information, and a scoring distribution sheet. Next slide, please. So how does this process begin? The process begins with the commitment level application, which looks at the organization's quality principles and management system in terms of the seven categories I mentioned. I had a team of writers that were very supportive in fundamental in me completing the application, which included Anna Schumacher from the county attorney's office, Eileen Fodis from our office, Betsy, we had Catherine Jones, and Brian Stanley were also key in helping us complete this 25-page application. The next process would be to move to the progress level application, once we receive feedback on the initial application, on what we need to improve, and have a team of examiners come visit the site. And again, if we write in the application that we're doing something, these examiners come in and confirm, and see results of what we're doing, so that it's not just at the top with the leadership, but that everybody throughout the organization adheres to the Baldrige process, adheres to a strategic plan, and is on board to achieve our mission and our vision. Once we go through the second process, the third tier is the FT, regional award level application, and the idea or the aim of these, each iteration of the application, is to get to the Malcolm Baldrige Award application, to have everything work in tangent, and be ready for the national level award. Next slide, please. Our road to Baldrige started with the creation of the vision and mission, and it was not a creation, but more of a reaffirm, refresh, and reset, and this was done in 2019, when the updated the vision and mission statement, with the first level, which is a commitment level application, submitted May of 2022. Then we'll wait for the results and the feedback, and tackle on the next level, which would be the progress level. And that will deal with how we implemented the feedback that we received from the examiners on the commitment level application. Next slide, please. And with that, I conclude the overview of the purpose of the Baldrige, and why it's important to embark on this process. Any questions the court may have?
No, thank you. And just for clarification, the Malcolm Baldrige is an administrative model that allows everybody to understand and be part of the same process. So every department now understands the criteria, those seven criterias will be for every department, they all come together. I think one of the things that I know we're gonna have the cooperation, but if you could sort of get close to the, to our criminal justice side of the formula, the judges, the council of judges, I think would be very important for them to be included, because they play such a huge role in what we do here, so.
Absolutely.
I'm very encouraged. I know UMC has, are also applying for that, and so, you know, most of our partners now, the city as well. So, you know, thank you for that. And what do we have at this time, Betsy? What is your expectation?
So today, we're not asking for any action, we just wanted to share this information with the court. On Monday, we're going to have, it may be on consent, but we're just going to ask for authorization for the judge to sign the application. And is that gonna be the only item on Monday, correct?
And then there's an amendment, and Anna's like.
Oh, yes. An amendment or agreement?
There's an amendment to include the conference, please, there's a conference that we sent out an invitation for, if you want to participate on this process. And like you mentioned, Judge, the city of El Paso has embarked on the Baldrige, as well as UMC, so we have a very, an opportunity to touch all those residents that fall outside of the city, of the MSA. It's about 200,000 residents, and I don't know the specific number in the businesses, but I could look at that, that we would touch through this process by improving performance excellence.
Thank you.
Anna, is there anything else you would like to add?
No, thank you so much. Great job, Dr. Madrigal.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Madrigal. Thank you. Caesar?
Item number five. Receive a presentation and discuss the binational affairs coordinator position and expected outcomes.
Welcome, Melissa.
Good morning, Judge. Commissioners, Melissa Carillo with County Administration. This morning, we have a very short presentation for you regarding the binational affairs coordinator position. This is a position that the court approved to be set in our budget effective April 1st, 2022, for FY22's budget. Normally, we don't bring job descriptions to the court at this level, but because this is a position that the court was interested in, we wanted to bring where we're at in terms of the expectations, the duties, and also the outcomes, to make sure that we're on the right path. We'd like to share where we're at at this point, and of course, seek any feedback, changes or directions that you might have. With your direction and guidance, today, we plan on finalizing the job description and getting ready to post the actual position for hire. So with that, next slide, please. This position was budgeted for FY22 at a PS18 level, which is a professional services-type position. The entry salary at this point is $86,775, and this is a summary of what the job is expected to do. So essentially, we're looking for a position that would help create some binational affairs engagement between our side and the Mexican side of the border, of course, serving the county of El Paso. The incumbent ideally would be looking to ensure our strategic vision and tactical direction would help to pursue development on both sides of the border, and really have a strong emphasis on developing relationships with key leadership on the Mexican side of the government, as well as here with our county leadership. Next slide, please. I won't read all of these to you, and please know, this is not inclusive of all the duties that are found within the job description. We did send out the draft job description to you all a few weeks ago, just so that you all could look. But again, for your sake and the public's sake, this is a general idea of the key duties that we expect this position to do. Setting up meetings, engaging in relationships, is really, really key. Coordinating and attending meetings on both sides is also very important. Looking to help with strategic plans and understanding common issues on both sides of the border, so that we work together versus duplicate efforts. Creating binational strategies that address key issues within our communities, developing continued initiatives to help promote these intergovernmental relationships. And then really, this position, we expect would work really closely with our Government Affairs Manager, to help with promoting interests on the legislative agenda, depending on what those issues actually are. Next slide, please. Other duties that we have, again, not inclusive entirely of what's in the job description. This position would require oral and written proficiency in both languages, English and Spanish. It would require this person to travel regularly across the border, would work nights and weekends, and we expect this position to travel pretty regularly for out-of-town professional conferences and meetings on either side of the border. Next slide, please. When looking for the ideal qualified candidate, these are some of the requirements we are thinking this position should have. Obviously, a substantial knowledge in binational temporary worker policies, politics of immigration reform, and just overall binational relationships between the two countries. We expect this position to really have a great, strong knowledge of foreign policy, business trade within the U.S. and Mexican economies, practical applications of governments in general, as well as the USMCA. We'd expect this position to have a skill to develop strong relationships, as we continue to mention. And then we looked at comparable positions across the Southwest region, and we believe this position would have, would require a bachelor's degree, a master's would be preferred in either of these common areas of study, to include PoliSci, International Studies, Global Affairs, Public or Business Administration, or a related field. We would expect this person to have at least five years of experience in legislative law or public policy, and we would ask that it include two years of policy research at a binational level. Again, these would be minimum requirements. If we were able to find a candidate that exceeded these requirements, that we would absolutely look at different rates of pay, but at minimum, the entry level for this position would require these types of expectations. Next slide, please. When selected, we are hoping to meet with this position or this selected candidate, and let them know these are the outcomes that the court is asking for, to include, again, those strong relationships. How well are we building those key relationships across both sides of the border? Developing the understanding of both sides, the issues, so that they can bring to the county's attention, and see how we work collaboratively to address them. We would expect them to coordinate a minimum of at least two meetings between county leadership and Mexican government leadership, facilitate regular discussions on the port of entry, with the idea of bringing solutions to that. Facilitating opportunities for historical tourism would also be one of its expected outcomes. And lastly, just expecting the position to have periodic presentations to the court, letting them know where they're at on current issues, solutions, and progress. So with that, we'd like to seek your feedback, your direction. Are we on the right page? Do we need to make some adjustments? Really looking forward to hearing your guidance on this.
Melissa, what's the, in the hierarchy of the organization, where is it being placed? Melissa, what's the, in the hierarchy of the organization, where is it being placed?
So this is a good question. This position, Betsy and I have spoken about, we anticipate that it would be placed in government and Forgiving County Administration. And so it would be at a professional level, similar to how you have experts, a government affairs manager, you'd also have a binational affairs coordinator. Dr. Madrigal, she's our strategic performance manager. It would be similar to those types of positions.
And let me tell you, we went back and forth about where to place this position, but we did not want to pigeonhole it into any subject. So we've heard feedback from the court that it's not just economic development, it's not just public health issues, it's not just infrastructure issues. It could be a broad range of topics that it works on. And so we want it to keep the mindset and not become aligned with a department's mindset, per se, just to keep it more broad initially. We may eventually discover that it does align somewhere else better, but we really wanted to leave it open and broad for whatever topic may come up, that it's got a mindset, and it would be then a hub to connect with internal resources as well as the court.
You and I talked about the Office of New Americans, and, you know, there seems to be some straddling there. You want to talk a little bit about how...
Right.
That we don't create just, instead of expanding what we have, that we create another position. So would you address that?
Right. So the Office of New Americans, realistically, is, I mean, the main focus, if you will, is really accommodating and integrating individuals who are coming to live here into this community as smoothly and seamlessly and as successfully as possible. Not as much on international issues, international, binational issues. I'll give you an example, something we haven't had here yet, but an example, in one of the cities or one of the communities that has this position, one issue that they worked on was sewage. Sewage was actually seeping up on the US side of the border from activities happening on the Mexican side of the border. And this person was a liaison and coordinated between the two countries, and they worked together to help develop policy and to draw down federal funding. And so that's an example of something a binational affairs person does as opposed to an Office of New American position. So Office of New Americans is really focused on, they have to be aware of what's happening, of course, at the border, but they're focused on just that seamless integration of people into community, whereas this is broader than that one area. I do think that may be something in the future where we create an Office of Intergovernmental Relations, and it could be this position and Office of New Americans under it. But right now, Office of New Americans is so integrated into community services and connecting people to community services that we have at house there. But it is a possibility in the future.
The only caution, obviously, from my HR experience is that you don't want to throw a person or a position at something. Like, we have this person, and now we've got this international thing that we have to do. And that we look very carefully that it's not something that maybe, there's so many touchpoints in this international relationship that we have, that I'm not sure that one person would be the answer as much as what do we as a county do to have all these touchpoints? For example, legislation, and, you know, how do we connect with them and what's going on? And then Office of New Americans can touch base on these areas. And so I just want to make sure, and I don't know if there's any feedback from the commissioners. Commissioner Leon, could you?
Yeah, thank you. You bring up some good points. I'm generally supportive of this, but I do have some concerns. I think an issue that that person, that position could help out is this refugee issue that's coming up with migrants. You know, there are several agencies in El Paso that have a liaison, Borderplex Alliance, El Paso Chamber of Commerce, UTEP Binational Academic Partnerships, City of El Paso, Alliance for Border Collaboratives, and there's several more. And I heard you say, and I saw it in the backup, that they are to coordinate efforts and really report back to the court with, I really want to see what those accomplishments are. What have we accomplished? And like you mentioned, Betsy, there's so many areas that we're going to spread this person out. And I just don't want to duplicate. El Paso is very good at duplicating a lot of duties, whether it's a city in the county or others. But I just want to make sure that this position isn't merely, it's a convenience that we use this position to coordinate other efforts, that it actually accomplishes something. And that's what I'd really like to see, and I don't know if it's quarterly reports or how often this person will report back to the court with, this is what I'm working on, this is what I've done, and we can, because of things coming into our individual offices, give that person, this might be of interest to the entire county. So like I say, I'm generally supportive of this. I just want to make sure that it isn't diluted with the other agencies and with what they're doing, and that we don't run contrary to everything else that others are doing, and we just sort of water down the effort of our dual communities here.
I think along with that, I was concerned that it doesn't become a person that just goes and, you know, they'll sit at all these different meetings and things that I do, things that Commissioner Stout does, that, for example, Ken Salazar, the ambassador from the US to Mexico, he has a meeting, and he, you know, we say, okay, well, this person's going to attend that meeting. But then what? Then what about attending that meeting? And so it's not going to be easy to really structure the, and I think going back to Commissioner Leon, is that it's something that's very effective, that makes a big difference other than just participating in all these meetings. Because you could do that, I can tell you, I get invited to attend a week kind of thing that, you know, they want me to be at certain places, and you go, but then what? You know, then what do we do? So if you could sort of, maybe, I think what would help the court to say, these are specific activities that they're going to be involved in, and then this is what they're going to do to make it more effective than what we're doing here at this time. Because I see the importance, but I just want to make sure...
Judge, that's exactly what we're asking, too. That's like, what do you want? So one of the things we heard to add on was being a conduit to other county departments, to make sure it's clear that it's not a one-person connection, right? And that was one of the things that we emphasized in the job description, is that you're like, they're a connector, right? They show us what opportunities we are not even aware of. They make us, you know, maybe it's something that, like the historic tourism, Commissioner Olgin brought that up. It's looking for making the connections and the opportunities, I think of the missions. And I know I've been to the church down in Juarez that's older than our churches, and that's making that connection. And how do we make that streamlined, connecting our tourism people with, how do we make this streamlined? Not being the one to take over and do tourism, but to make that connection. Who do we need to connect with? Who all is going to be invited to the table to make this outcome happen? And...
Well, see, that's a perfect example of what I'm afraid of. See, there, I would just ask Valerie to connect with Mexico and what they're doing in tourism, and not have a person in between both of them. And then if it has to do with, let's say, sewage, and I connect the public works with... So I see more touchpoints like that between our, you know, what we do and them than a person being in the middle of both trying to figure out. So I worry, like, that's a perfect example, because I can just say, Valerie, I mean, they have tourism, they're trying to accomplish something. Can I connect you with them to make sure that we consider them as part of our tourism? That's what, you know, that's...
And when you all originally proposed this position to us, I think one of your mindsets, from what I recall, was Mexico works a lot on relationships and building relationships. And it's more cultural there that things are relationship-based. And so you take, and I'm going to use Valerie as an example, Valerie who may not have a relationship in the community across the border. Whereas if this person had a relationship and was, had built relationships and knew who, like, whether they know the person specifically in that area, they know somebody who does know somebody. And builds that upon that relationship, and it makes those connections smoother, easier, possibly more effective. That would be their job, is to build those relationships, to make those connections easier. That would be part of their job. But if the court is, I mean, we created this position based on the court's request. And so if the court is thinking it's not what you were wanting to achieve, or not the way you want to achieve it, and you'd rather us integrate it another way, we want that feedback. But this is based on the feedback we've received from all of you over time. And that's why we brought it. We don't normally bring a job description, but because this is new, and we think that all of you have different visions, we wanted to be clear on what the outcome should be.
I think the position's okay. I just need to be a little bit more convinced as to the week of this person, what they'd be doing, and then how do we make that very productive? Because if it's just a matter of establishing relationships and coordinating, then we are not taking advantage of, like, UTEP has a real strong connection, they have a person that actually does that. It'd be easier for me to call and say, hey, you know, Arturo, Dr. Vario, would you connect me with someone there that has something to do with tourism, for example, and utilize what they're doing? So, but I think it's important. I just want to make sure that we, I'm always thinking of the position as to, you don't throw them in there and say, okay, try to figure this out for us.
Right.
So...
Judge, if I may?
Yeah. Commissioner Olgin?
Well, I think, I'm also generally supportive of the position, but I think that we do have to be very, very, we have to lay out our expectations. And maybe this is something that we do at the beginning of every year or every six months of, I think we have to prioritize certain things, or make sure that the person understands what we want to prioritize, what we're looking at at that particular moment in time. So for example, right now, everything that's happening with the refugees, the asylum seekers, that would be something the person could help with. That's an immediate need. I'm also thinking in terms of, like, for example, the Torneo Port of Entry. We hear that there's all kinds of movement on the Mexican side, the building of the roadway, and so there may be now some advancement, but it's kind of coming from all different directions. So I think that this would be something that that person could work on to kind of piece all of those pieces together. And our public work staff is wonderful at trying to get that information, but of course, they've got a million other things that are going on. So I think it would be a question of making sure that the person knows whether, like I said, on a yearly basis or every six months, these are the things that we're asking you to focus on now. One, you know, right now, the migrant issue, the Torneo Bridge, let's figure out what's happening on the Mexican side. So I think we just have to be very clear about specific projects...
Expectations.
And expectations. And that can change as things happen. But I think the person needs to understand, like, this is what we want you to focus on because this is a priority for the court. This is happening right now at this moment.
And I think that's what Melissa wanted to hear from us, to say, you know, what is it that we're, I mean, I'll give you a specific example, would take a lot of pressure off of me, the binational conference, for example. It's something that's just like, oh, I'm trying to be part of it, but I'm also very distracting. And so if I were to say, you know, could you now take over that situation, we're getting ready for the next one in Torreon, that's a lot of things that I don't want to get involved in, that would be good for them to say, look, can you handle this? Because it's very important that we're part of this tourism group of border cities trying to figure out how to increase tourism on the border. But you're right, very specific things that they can do. So I'm hoping that that sort of helps from our comments as you go towards that job description.
And Judge, Melissa, I know that you contacted all of our offices for input, and, you know, really, other than it being more crystallized right now, I was at a loss. But in looking back at, you know, there's so many other agencies that have some sort of person or a coordinator. I mentioned the city of El Paso, but also the city of El Paso International Bridges Department, International Boundary and Water Commission, Texas DSHS, Binational Health Council, Las Americas, Southwest Maquiladora Association, and the list is pretty extensive that they work with these people and work with us very, because the directions that we want that person to go might change from one day to the other, depending on what's...
What the needs are for the community to... Yes, Commissioner Stout?
So I originally proposed the creation of this position because I have always heard talk about wanting to be one region and work together and collaborate and coordinate as one region. And I felt there was a huge vacuum of collaboration and coordination between the county and our counterparts in Mexico. Before you came along, Judge, I feel like I was the only one that actually did any cross-border collaboration or, you know, reached out to the mayor's office over there or did any of that. And I wanted it to be kind of institutionalized within the county because, you know, there's so many different areas, and between you and I, or everybody on the court, like, you know, it's just difficult for us because we have so many other duties. And it's, you know, and, you know, we went to San Diego with the Chamber of Commerce a number of years ago and, you know, saw some models, really great models of cross-border collaboration there, and actually brought some, back some of the ideas that they, you know, that we mined in that trip, like, the fact that we offer our employees the opportunity to have healthcare in Juarez, right? That's an example of that. You know, through our advocacy and that same, you know, trip and talking about the need for cross-border conversation and collaboration, the Chamber of Commerce put together their binational effort as well. And I understand that a lot of other entities have people that do the same, and it's because they understand the importance of having that, but they don't work for us. And yes, we can call Arturo or people and ask him on a, you know, you know, we can call them up and ask them for information, but they're not, they don't work, he doesn't work for us, and they don't work for us. And I feel like the county needs to have eyes and ears and understand what's going on in Juarez because, you know, I think we need to understand who the players are over there, who's in government over there, what they're working on in so many different areas in Ciudad Juarez and in Mexico City. And I just feel like we don't have the capacity to do that ourselves, right? And so we need a point person, we need somebody who can be our liaison and can help us understand and can give us information that's more readily available for us, you know? I mean, you know, but if you look in the actual job description, a lot of what you all are talking about, I think, is included, right? I mean, it talks about identifying a list of issues that impact both sides of the border, presenting policy options for the Commissioners Court, looking at weaknesses and strengths to provide ideas for improvement, working, doing research on, you know, what other entities are doing the same type of thing, and maybe creating a roundtable with those people so that we have more collaboration and communication with those other entities, like the ones that Commissioner Leon listed. Coordinating with stakeholders on economic development issue, maintaining that dialogue, participating in policy and trade association meetings. All of those things, I think, are exactly what we're talking about, right? And so I feel like the, some of the, the only changes I wanted to look at is just to make sure that when we talk about economic development, but we also talk about community and understanding, you know, community development, binational community development as well, you know, talking to nonprofits... community development as well, you know, talking, talking to nonprofits and grassroots and community stakeholders, as well as, you know, just, just making sure that we have kind of like that social and cultural connectivity above and beyond what, you know, just economic development and, and kind of what we've been talking about. But I think that there's a lot that this person is going to, to be able to do and there's a lot of, there's a lot of information that they're going to be able to provide to us. And it's, and it's about, you know, creating that relationship and showing our counterparts in Juarez that, you know, we're paying attention to what's going on over there and we, and it's important for us, just like UTEP does, just like all of those other organizations in the city. And, and so, you know, I really feel like this, this, this position is going to be very, very beneficial for, for us at the Commissioners Court.
I think if, the only thing I'd like to add, because I think we've agreed that the position is just that we make sure that, you know, how do we place this, the responsibilities? But I think if you, if you're hearing our conversation and you're looking at the, you need to create a profile of who we're looking for. I'm not quite sure that at 86, you're, you're going to look at someone that has international relationships, that is able to sit there with someone like Ken Salazar in a meeting and really understand the, the outcome. So I, I think you might consider looking at other positions that are similar and, and, but I think it's, it's not going to be an easy search, in, in my opinion. And this is a person who's had international experience, who can convey in Spanish and English into both sides of the border, that can be in different levels of, of organizations. So just take that into consideration, that you might not be able to, from the conversation, I, I don't think at an 86,000 that you would be able to satisfy the, the caliber of the person that, that we're looking for.
No, this is, this is good, Judge. Commissioners, thank you for the feedback. I've, I've taken quite a bit of notes as you're talking. We will go back and amend. One of the things that we also will do, we set aside the PS-18 rating as a placeholder, right? Because we had yet to write the job description. And so we will definitely run this by HR and make sure that they look at the job description after it's been finalized to see if the rating is appropriate. And in their rating, they'll double check the market and see comparable positions to make sure we're still in line. So we'll, we'll do all of that with the direction we received today.
Okay. Well, thank you, Melissa Berry. I keep looking at you as the HR person.
One, one more, one more little chunk of feedback, real quick. It says, when, when it comes to the, I don't know if the, if the court will be in agreement with this, but when it comes to like the, the background that you talked about, like the, the academic background that you're, that you're looking at, I, I think that we could also include people who may be historians or with like border, you know, experts in border history or something like that as well. I mean, along those lines, not just like the political science or the economic side, but also the cultural side, right? So.
I think it'll be key.
I think that, that is.
Good point.
Thank you.
Okay.
Melissa?
Thank you all.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Caesar.
C, Grants Administration Division. Regarding El Paso County Victim Services Grant Program Sustainability Planning and Provide Direction.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners.
Good morning, Wally.
Wally, the Office of Budget and Policy. The Governor's Office has reduced its awards to Victim Services in an effort to promote new representatives and encourage local sustainability across the state. As recent as December of '21, the Rio Grande Council of Governments, in coordination with the Governor's Office, announced a mandatory sustainability plan to be implemented by regional entities with victim service grant programs. This will impose a 10% award funding reduction per fiscal year, beginning in fiscal year '23 through fiscal year '26 funding cycles. In fiscal year '27, all El Paso County Victim Service Programs will no longer be grant-funded through the state. Today's presentation is going to offer you with an overview of the county's programs affected by the Governor's Office and the Rio Grande Council of Governments Sustainability Implementation. It will provide the Commissioners Court of the potential short-term and long-term financial and programmatic considerations and the next steps that we need to proceed. Although no action will be taken by the court today at this time, we will be looking for direction during our budget hearings in the upcoming months. With that, I'd like to turn the presentation over to our grant team. Today you'll be hearing a presentation from Ms. Erica Ortega, Rebecca Rodriguez, and Leticia Bisciano. With that, I'll turn the presentation over to Erica. You'll begin the slideshow, please.
Welcome, Erica.
Thank you. Hi, good morning, Judge and Commissioners. Erica Ortega, manager for the Grants Administration Division. So our team is here before you today to discuss, as Wally mentioned, sustainability planning for five county victim services programs that are currently funded through the Governor's Office. Our division has coordinated with these programs, with the departments and their staff, to gather information for this presentation. So I'd like to thank my staff and the program staff for their assistance and cooperation with this process. I will begin the presentation with some general information and then the team will provide in-depth overviews for each program that will also include the financials for each program. And then at the end of the presentation, we will discuss next, next steps for the court. Next slide, please. Okay. So I'd like to start off by explaining how the grant award process works for county victim services programs, as well as other select programs being funded by the Governor's Office. So each year, the COG Criminal Justice Advisory Committee, also known as CJAC, receives presentations and reviews grant applications for regional and local victim services, law enforcement, and other various programs. After CJ ranks these programs and provides recommendations for funding allocations to the Governor's Office. The Governor's Office, of course, they value these recommendations, but may ultimately carry out different award plans at its discretion. Most recently, the Governor's Office and CJAC decided to require local program sustainability from FY '23 to FY '26, which means existing county victim services programs will face a 10% reduction in awards each year. By FY '27, these programs should be fully sustained by local funding or perhaps discontinued if they are not fiscally capable. Please keep in mind, although these programs hope to receive funding through FY '26, all programs may risk not being awarded by the Governor's Office each year. And lastly, I'd like to, to let the court know that even though this presentation today focuses on victim services programs, the sustainability planning requirement also applies to the Justice Assistance Program. For example, if the SO has a new program that is selected for funding, for future funding under the Justice Assistance Grant, that program will also face a 10% reduction each year over a five-year period. The reason, however, why we are only highlighting the victim services grants today is because this process has not caused any financial concerns with the Sheriff's Office or other county grant programs. Next slide, please. This slide shows five county programs that must implement sustainability planning to include the 65th Judicial District's Protective Order Court, the County Attorney's Victim Resource Program, the SO Victim Service Unit, the DA's Victim Assistance Program, and the DA's Domestic Violence Outreach Initiative. So as you can see, each program differs in the amount of grant cycles that have been completed, the number of grant-funded employees, the number of participants or cases the program has assisted with over the past three completed fiscal years. In total, these programs have 14 grant-funded employees, which means the court will need to determine from now through FY '26 if several or all positions will be converted to permanent county employees. Please note today, no action is requested from the court. However, the court is highly encouraged to take action on several things as soon as possible, which I will discuss more at the end of the presentation. Like I mentioned earlier, our team will provide general information on each program's and the financials. However, if you have any specific questions regarding services or grant activities, each program should also be online and available after the presentation. Marisa Quintanilla from the Rio Grande Council of Governments may also be online. I know she had some commitments this morning, but she will try her best to be available after the meeting as well. I also, just to note, I wanted to inform the court that all five programs were given the option to submit fact sheets to provide more program information to the court. So on the backup of this agenda item, you will see the programs that provided additional information. Next slide, please. Okay. This slide gives you an idea of how the grant awards are anticipated to be reduced through FY '26. You will see each award decreasing by 10% each fiscal year. This also means county match funding must increase as the award amounts decrease. And we will provide match amounts needed for each program later in the presentation. Upon release of grant applications each year from the Governor's Office, all five programs plan to request permission to continue to apply with increased match support to sustain their program activities and personnel, as they will all like to continue operating in the next few years and of course, beyond FY '26. At the bottom of the slide, you'll see the DA's Domestic Violence Outreach Initiative Program Award Amounts have been crossed out, as this program has not been recommended for funding by CJAC in FY '23. This is not definite, this is only a recommendation to the Governor's Office, therefore we must plan for all scenarios, the program being funded or the program not being funded. Please keep in mind that this program, you know, it may or may not be funded. We'll discuss this more at the end of the presentation. Next slide, please. Okay. So before we get, we begin discussing each program, I wanted to inform the court that our division has researched alternative funding sources. As a reminder, the Governor's Office will only consider funding new victim services initiatives, so that is no longer an option for these specific county programs. Unfortunately, the Office for Victims of Crime under DOJ at the federal level only provides very competitive and separate funding opportunities to serve specific victim populations such as transgender, human trafficking, sexual assault, elderly, youth, and disabled victims. And some have very narrow scope requirements to include research, training, enhanced technology use, and technical assistance. Therefore, I would only recommend the Office for Victims of Crime Grants as short-term supplemental opportunities to enhance the county's current victim services programs. The last alternative is the Attorney General's Office, O-VAG, you'll see on the right hand of the slide, which will only allow one county program to apply per funding cycle. The funding is also very minimal, it funds around $50,000 per fiscal year, and the next funding cycle unfortunately doesn't begin until FY '24. So although chances are very slim, the county will fund alternative funding, will find alternative funding to support these five programs, our team, of course, will continue to seek out grant funding to assist with sustainability planning. Great. So I will now pass it over to Ms. Rebecca Rodriguez, who will begin providing more detailed information on each program. Next slide, please.
Thank you, Erica. Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. Rebecca Rodriguez, Grant Analyst in the Grants Administration Division. The slide here provides a brief over, a financial overview of the 65th Judicial District Protective Order Court. I'll provide a brief program description for you before going over the financials. The Protective Order Court was established by Commissioners Court in February of 2011 and is a fully operational court that has the capacity to handle all applications for protective orders filed in El Paso County within the statutorily mandated 14-day period contained in Family Code Section 84.001. The Protective Order Court handles protective order cases and all related family matters such as divorces, child support, custody, possession, and access in suits affecting the parent-child relationships involving the parties to the protective order case. Prior to the creation of the Protective Order Court, there were numerous issues that deterred victims from obtaining protective orders within the state mandated 14-day period. In 2021, the Council of Judges passed a local rule ordering all standalone protective orders to be filed in the Protective Order Court, which has increased the number of cases being heard in court. As the slide shows, the Protective Order Court hears a significant number of cases, more than 400 cases per fiscal year. As the Governor's Office reduces grant funding 10% each fiscal year beginning FY '23, the county match amount will increase as the program budget increases to sustain program activities. By FY '26, the county is projected to receive an award amount of approximately $104,000, providing a county match, if approved, of approximately $172,000 for a projected total budget of approximately $276,000. In FY '26, if the court approves this program to be funded by general funds in FY '27, the total FY '27 budget is estimated to be approximately $293,000. Next slide, please. Here, we have a list of program sustainability factors for the Protective Order Court, describing some of the positive outcomes that result from the sustainment of the program, as well as risks to the community should the program be discontinued. Some of the positive outcomes resulting from program sustainment are the fact that victims of family violence, sexual assault, and stalking will have a court to timely hear their protective orders. There will always be a dedicated judge to hear emergency protective orders. And victims and their families will have a one-stop shop to hear all their family law matters with the judge that is familiar with their case. Some of the risks faced by the county should the program be discontinued are the protective orders will be distributed amongst the four family law courts, which already have substantial dockets. Victims of family violence, sexual assault, and stalking risk not having their protective orders heard within 14 days, which could endanger their lives and well-being. Next slide, please. On this slide, you'll see a financial overview of the County Attorney's Office Victim Resource Program. Before we review these, I can provide you a brief description of the program. The County Attorney's Office Victim Resource Program provides assistance to victims, particularly victims of intimate partner violence, who are in the process of going from crisis to self-sufficiency and empowerment. The purpose of the Licensed Master Social Worker Position is to assist victims of intimate partner violence and navigate the post-crisis phase of their journey by linking them with other support services, assisting them in understanding and participating in the criminal justice and civil justice system, and addressing their sense of safety and security. The employment of the social worker aids the program to assess the victims' immediate and long-term needs, assess the level of current and continuing danger, engage victims in comprehensive safety planning, coordinate access to various resources, including local, state, and federal programs. Many barriers prevent a victim from assessing any or all of these resources available to them, including personal safety concerns, lack of knowledge, language barriers, transportation, childcare, lack of access to technology, and mental health. The social worker's coordination of access to local, state, and federal programs ensures that victims are not only educated about the various resources available to them, but also provides victims the ability to break through the barriers and break the cycle of violence forever. As depicted in the slide, the County Attorney's Office Victim Resource Program has a significant number of participants. They assist with the needs of more than 600 victims per fiscal year. As the Governor's Office reduces the funding for this program by 10% each fiscal year from FY '23 through FY '26, the county match contribution will increase. The projected county match contribution for FY '26, the last year of Governor's Office funding, is approximately $74,000 for a total program budget of approximately $119,000. In FY '26, if the court approves this program to be funded by general funds in FY '27, the total FY '27 budget is estimated to be approximately $125,000. Next slide, please. This slide summarizes some of the program sustainability factors for this program, the County Attorney's Office Victim Resource Program. Some of the positive outcomes associated with sustaining this program are that each victim and survivor, each victim is provided brief crisis counseling and tailored resources based on individual needs. Survivors will receive expert care and ongoing safety planning from a licensed social worker. Survivors have their voices heard and receive referrals for longer-term assistance benefits and other resources to help them thrive. Some of the... Some of the risks associated with the discontinuation of this program include the fact that survivors will not receive wraparound services from a dedicated professional in their time of greatest need or crisis. Survivors will not receive critical and immediate services to assist them in breaking free from the cycle of violence. Survivors may not receive specialized agency referrals to help them with long-term care and benefits. Next slide, please. Thank you. This slide here provides the financial overview for the Sheriff's Office Victim Service Unit Program. I will provide a brief description of the program for you before we go over these financials. The El Paso County Sheriff's Office Victim Service Unit are considered first responders at the time of an incident. Responding within 48 to 72 hours after the incident, the SO Victim Services Unit responds to the emotional impact and physical needs of all victims of crime. The SO provides unrestricted access to services within the rural areas of El Paso, assisting with judicial support and personal advocacy, direct counseling or referrals as necessary, financial assistance through Texas Crime Victim Compensation, such as loss of wages, funeral arrangements, and medical expenses. The Victims Unit is the only unit within the rural areas to provide free counseling services to individuals after a traumatic event occurs, affording all these victims the right to be heard and informed of their rights. On this slide, the SO Victim Service Unit provides services to an average of 1,600 participants per fiscal year. The FY23 projected Governor's Office Award Amount is approximately $144,000. The program funding for FY23 includes a county match contribution of approximately $84,000 for a total program budget of approximately $228,000. As per the Governor's Office Sustainability Plan Implementation, they will reduce this grant funding by 10% each fiscal year through FY26. The projected award amount in FY26 is approximately $105,000, which means a county match contribution in the amount of approximately $168,000 is needed to sustain program activities for a total budget of approximately $273,000. In FY26, if the court approves this program to be funded by general funds in FY27, the total FY27 budget is estimated to be approximately $227,000. Next slide, please. The slide here, you'll see the sustainability factors for the Sheriff's Office Victim Services Unit Program. Some of the positive outcomes resulting from sustaining this program is that the unit provides immediate in-person crisis intervention, such as crisis counseling and therapy during and after the crime or crisis for victims and their immediate family. The unit assists victims in providing direct links to appropriate resources and assists in completion and processing of the Texas Crime Victims Compensation Program. Transportation is available for victims to commute to safe locations and criminal justice proceedings, and services are unrestricted when providing services to the victims of crime. If the program is discontinued, some of the risks include that county rural areas would suffer a detrimental impact on the teachings of the cycle of violence. Rural El Paso County communities may lack information, knowledge, and proper resources on victims' rights, and hospitals would be financially impacted by victims' unpaid medical bills. Thank you. I will go ahead and hand over the presentation out to Letizia Vizcaino.
Thank you, Rebecca. Good morning Judge and Commissioners. Letizia Vizcaino, Grant Analyst in the Grants Administration Division. This slide provides a brief financial overview of the DA's Victims Assistance Program. Before I discuss the financials of this program, I will provide a brief program description. The DA's Victim Assistance Program has been funded by the Governor's Office for the past 20 years, and the DA's Office is required by law to provide prompt services to victims of crime in all crime, criminal matters within its jurisdiction. This program serves the largest community of crime victims in three counties, to include El Paso, Hutsford, and Culberson. Under this program, the DA's Office has served over 50,000 victims of crimes, ranging from misdemeanor assault and theft cases to the more serious felony cases such as murder, rape, aggravated assault, intoxication assaults, or manslaughter cases, and sexual assault of children. The director and court advocates are involved with all victims from the inception of the arrest, lasting through parole notification from TDJC as well as execution notification for death penalty cases. In addition, the 48-hour contact period with victims is crucial and often the only time for advocates to obtain accurate contact information from victims and provide safety plans and community resources available. And lastly, community outreach and presentations are also a large component of the unit. As you can see, each year, the program provides services to thousands of victims. In FY23, the award amount is projected to be approximately $287,000, and the county match needed to sustain the program will be approximately $181,000. The estimated award amount in FY26, given the Sustainability Plan, is approximately $209,000, which means a county match contribution in the amount of approximately $312,000 is needed to sustain program activities. In FY26, if the court approves this program to be funded by general funds for FY27, the total FY27 budget is estimated to be approximately $548,000. Next slide, please. This slide summarizes some of the program sustainability factors for the DA's Victim Assistance Program, describing positive outcomes associated with the program sustainment and the risks of the program if discontinued. Some positive outcomes resulting from this statement of the program include the District Attorney's Office has an obligation to the community to have a victim assistance coordinator on staff and stay compliant with the Texas Code of Criminal Procedure, Chapter 56. The victims of crime have a 24/7 access to a crisis line, and an advocate can text victims in a timely manner. Also, the victims are afforded advocacy before, during, and after an offense has been committed. The risks associated with the discontinuation of the program include victims may not have quick access to court proceedings and may not be afforded proper advocacy in preparation for court proceedings and learn how to further protect themselves. Victims may run the risk of being re-victimized when they are not afforded the tools of advocacy and coaching regarding the judicial process. Victims are essential in the prosecution of a case, and without the cooperation, numerous cases may be dismissed, thus creating a community safety threat. Next slide, please. This slide provides a brief financial overview of the DA's Domestic Violence Outreach Initiative. Before I discuss the financials of this program, I will provide a brief description of the program. The DA's Domestic Violence Program's sole mission is to hold offenders accountable and keep victims safe. Several high-profile murder cases in El Paso, Texas, stemmed from domestic violence and led to the creation of the Domestic Violence Unit in 2008. The Domestic Violence Unit was recently reorganized and restructured to hire a professional counselor who has the education and experience to train other advocates in dealing with victims who are suffering from trauma. With the rise in mental health caused by the COVID pandemic, it is now more crucial than ever to retain a licensed professional counselor on staff. The investigator's role is crucial in preparing the case for trial and collecting evidence from law enforcement, locating necessary witnesses, escorting the victims to court, and educating local law enforcement officers as well as community members about the role of the District Attorney's Office in obtaining justice for crime victims. The counselor and investigator act as liaisons between the prosecutors and the victims and families of crime by providing court hearing notification and sitting with the prosecutors during the pre-trial preparation for cases scheduled for jury trial. As this slide demonstrates, the program has served several thousand participants per each fiscal year. Please note, the award and match amounts for FY23 through FY26 have been crossed out because as Erica mentioned earlier, this program has not been recommended for funding in FY23. However, the final funding decision will be made by the Governor's Office sometime in September or October of this year. The total program costs for FY23 are expected to be approximately $180,000, and projections for future years are also provided on this slide. In the event the program is not approved for funding, the court shall decide if the county will pick up future expenses beginning October 1st, 2022. Erica will discuss those later on in the presentation. Next slide, please. This slide summarizes some of the program sustainability factors for the DA's Domestic Violence Program, describing positive outcomes and associated with program sustainment and risks if the program is chosen to be discontinued. Some of the positive outcomes resulting from the sustainment of the program include victims of family violence are provided an advocate before, during, and after the judicial process. The District Attorney's Office has an employee specially trained in family violence to provide services to victims, and each victim will be provided counseling, advocacy, and holistic services. The victim's safety is always the top priority to prevent harm arising from cooperation with prosecution efforts. Some of the risks associated with the discontinuation of this program include the victims of domestic violence may not receive one-on-one advocacy and/or intervention services via a licensed professional counselor. Victims of domestic violence run a greater risk of being murdered by the perpetrator when not exclusively coached and assisted by domestic violence staff. Next slide, please. Now that we've discussed the financials of the programs individually, this slide summarizes the match needed for each program for the next few years. These are the same numbers we've included in the previous program slides, but this slide offers a comparison view for the five programs. This slide also provides an estimate of the number of cases and participants to be served based on the previous year averages. As you can see, again, we have crossed out the estimated match amounts for the DA Domestic Violence Program to reflect that this program may not be funded. However, the match amounts are still provided in the case that the program is funded. Lastly, please note, FY23 county match amounts have already been approved by the court, which we will discuss later in the presentation. County match needed for FY24 through FY26 will be requested with annual agenda items when programs separately ask the court for permission to apply. Next slide, please. The table on this slide summarizes estimated program budgets for FY27, 28, and 29, should the court decide to convert all programs to be strictly funded by county general funds, and also provides the number of employees in each program, along with the estimated number of participants and/or cases per fiscal year. You'll see that the estimated budgets vary from program to program. Should the court approve all five programs to be transitioned to general funds, the total financial impact for all programs is projected to be approximately $1.4 million in FY27, $1.48 million in FY28, and $1.5 million in FY29. I will now turn the presentation over to Erica, who will wrap it up. Thank you so much for your time, Commissioner, or County Judge and Commissioners. Next slide, please.
Thank you, Letizia.
Thank you, Letizia.
Thank you, Leti.
Thank you, Leti.
So during this final slide, I'd like to explain short-term and long-term decisions that must be made by the court based on the information you all have received today. To recap, all programs discussed will be requesting permission to continue to apply each year with increased county match support to sustain their program activities and personnel, and then transition to general funds in FY27. For the short term, if the DA's Domestic Violence Program is not funded, the court has the following options. So one, you can approve to fund the program beginning in FY23 and permanently after with 100% county general funds at its capacity, which is what the program has requested. Two, you can continue the program with reduced program activities or expenses. Or three, you can discontinue the program. We ask that the court provide a recommendation as soon as possible or during FY23 budget hearings at the latest. To add, the court should note that once grant-funded personnel or program expenses are transitioned to county general funds, these expenses may no longer be funded at 100% by a grant. If the county were to ever transfer certain general-funded expenses to a grant to have funded, this is what we call supplanting and would cause the county to be out of compliance with grant standards and guidelines. So we always have to carefully consider transitioning expenses from a grant to general funds as it must remain part of general funds.
Judge, Commissioners, Erica?
For...
Erica, really quick before you go on. So we're providing this information today, but I do want to be clear. So whenever a grant is no longer funded, which, I mean, it hasn't happened in this magnitude in some time, but when it does happen, it has to go back through the competitive process just like any other department that's asking for something to be funded. So the team is doing a really thorough overview of these programs for the court today, but we want you to know it's going to go back through the same process. So a 10% pickup on one of these grants versus funding something else will be measured at the same time. And then they'll be brought back with recommendations to the court on what our findings are. Those served, the purpose of the programs, what it's preventing, and how it's helping our systems overall will all be taken into consideration. I just want to make sure that that's clear. We're not asking you to act on it today. It's part of what will be the budget process.
I'm sorry, Erica, but I just want to make sure I understand the supplanting prohibition. So then, if a grant-funded position is converted over to be paid for with general funds, then you're saying that in the future, we can never move that position back to be funded with grant funds if another grant opportunity comes along in the future? Is that right?
So it can. If we find a grant that we'd like a certain position within the county to assist with, it can only be a percentage of that position. So it can't be at 100%. We can say if the grant funds up to 50% of a position. Sometimes grants have stipulations where they'll only fund certain percentages of a position of an existing position. But we would, of course, pay attention to those guidelines. And so there is a chance in the future that we can have certain employees transition to a grant, but only at a certain percentage. And of course, it would be temporary as long as the grant is funded and awarded.
Okay, thank you.
Wally, did you want to comment till you came on the screen?
No, just to reemphasize what Erica led the presentation with and what Ms. Keller mentioned a moment ago. Today is just to let the court know what's coming up in the next four fiscal years and thereafter, that we're just going to have to plan for, if we're going to retain these, the additional grant impact at 10% a year. We will be bringing this to you in budget hearings. Of course, these grants have already been applied for fiscal year 23. So the matches required for fiscal year 23 will be included in the recommended budget that we file with you in July. Thereafter, we'll be discussing this on an annual basis.
And I guess it was always clear that there's a time where, you know, we need to take over certain of these positions. And so I think it was clear. And I think, like you said, Betsy, it hadn't been this much. I mean, at one time, it sort of all came together. I think, and I'd like to note that, if you notice, that the termination or the lack of support of these, when you... support of these, when you had the risk areas, a lot of them had to do with the safety of the participants, you know, of not leaving them in a situation that they were vulnerable because we were no, we didn't have the ability to advocate for them or put them in a situation that would protect them. So I think it became very clear that by not having this funding, that we got a lot of participants that would be put in a difficult situation.
Agreed, agreed. I'll go ahead and continue, if I may, with the second, short-term point and the long-term. Okay, and this is something that probably Betsy and Wally have already covered, so I just want to repeat, just to make sure we're on the same page. So the second point of discussion for the short-term decisions is that, earlier this year, the court approved program application submittals and necessary funding match for the Governor's Office Victim Services Programs for the FY23 funding cycle. And so, Leti had mentioned in her slides earlier, and this is something that Wally touched on, that the court approved the match for FY23. And what she meant by this is that the court approved the funding during the grant application agenda item approval. So technically, the court has not approved this match funding officially until the FY23 budget is approved and adopted later this year. So something important to highlight is, as with all grants our county departments apply for, the court always has the option to rescind any applications or reject awards when we do receive notification. So with that being said, we would like to ask the court if it'd like to continue with these programs and match amounts needed if all are awarded in FY23. And so we would just request that a recommendation for the FY23 match funding be given as soon as possible, or as we mentioned, during the FY23 budget hearings at the latest. Okay, I'd like to just go over, I'm going to just touch really quick on the long-term decisions, which is something that the court can consider down the road. The court may choose not to approve one or more applications or awards for these victim services programs anytime from now through FY26. However, it must decide if the county will then directly migrate these programs to general funds or discontinue them. And then lastly, the last point under long-term, the court may approve all programs and necessary funding in the next few years, as long as they are awarded. And in FY26, we would then provide, you all would provide the necessary direction as to what shall become of each program at that time. So this means necessary match funding will be requested by each program to sustain the grant personnel and activities each year until FY26, or until the program is not selected for award. And as I mentioned, at any time, any fiscal year, the Governor's Office may choose not to fund one program or another. So this is, Judge and Commissioners, this is the end of our presentation. I've kind of touched on a little bit what Wally and Betsy have discussed. I know our slides included a lot of information, numbers, data, so please feel free to ask for clarification on anything we've discussed. And our team, as well as the program staff for these five programs, are available for comments and questions. And I understand that Marisa Quintanilla from the COG is also sitting in the audience, so if you have any questions for the COG, she is also available as well.
But please comment your views on what we just presented.
Right. Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, Judge. Marisa Quintanilla, Regional Services Director. Just wanted to go ahead and provide you with some historical information as to how we got here. And so, we, the Council of Governments, have interlocal agreements with the Governor's Office to prioritize certain fund sources. So you're looking at your victims' grants, which is your VOCA, your Violence Against Crime Act. You're looking at your VAWA, which is your Violence Against Women's Act, your juvenile justice programs, and your criminal justice programs as well. And so, for some time now, the Criminal Justice Advisory Committee has been asking applicants to provide a sustainability. Should funding go away tomorrow, how would they sustain these grants? So the committee, the Criminal Justice Advisory Committee, has afforded the opportunity to applicants to go ahead and formally like that. And throughout the years, the committee has seen that applicants were just not ready to do that sustainability process, or really didn't take it too hard. So there was discussions back in '21 during our meetings where basically the committee said, "We're going to go ahead and prescribe a sustainability plan." And each grant that is currently funded under those fund sources are going to go ahead and have a 10% reduction. And so that has been conveyed with all applicants for preparation when they submitted their application for FY23. So it's not the Governor's Offices, the Governor's Office applying this 10% reduction, it's actually the local control that is given to the Criminal Justice Advisory. As you can see, and I'm not sure if you can go, Mr. Navas, back to the first slide when we talk about, I think the ribbon on that slide is county programs affected by COG sustainability. If you look at some of these, and not all the programs that are funded under those fund sources have been identified on this presentation. The other fund, the other programs are the Sheriff's Office, the Crisis Intervention Team, is that what they're called, from the Sheriff's Office? The County Attorney's Office also had a team project that was funded under juvenile justice programs. And so, all of those applications that were submitted for FY23 were applied, that 10% applicants had to apply that 10% reduction, if they currently receive funding for '22. So, would we be able to go back to that? As you can see, that some of those programs that are identified under that sustainability, you can see the number of grant cycles that those programs have been receiving funding as a continuation. So basically, if you look at the Protective Court, we're looking at 11 years. County Attorney's, the Victim Resource Program, two years. Sheriff's Office, eight years. District Attorney's, Victim Assistance, 20 years. And District Attorney's Domestic Violence, 23 years. And so, the thought process behind the CJAC prescribing this 10% is to allow new programs to come in and receive funding. On all fund sources, we have seen a reduction in funding coming in from the federal to the state level to our regional level. And so this kind of just freed up some money to go ahead and have new applicants come in, and it's very competitive. I will also lean on Judge Gonzalez, who is the co-chair of the Criminal Justice Advisory Committee, if he wanted to add anything in regards to sustainability and how we got here. The other point I wanted to go ahead and mention as he steps up is that after FY26, applicants can go ahead and reapply. It does not mean that they're banned from reapplying. They can go ahead and come back and reapply, and should they be recommended for funding, it would be at 100%. So the reduction is for five years for a minimum of $50,000. So at the five-year, I think there was one program that was like at $44,000 that I saw. It would now go to 44, it would go at a floor ceiling of $50,000. And so Judge Gonzalez, did you want to add?
Thank you. Welcome.
Good morning, Judge Commissioners. Assistant County Attorney Joe Gonzalez. Marissa keeps on referring to me as Judge, and some people do. I used to be the judge of the Protective Order Court, and no longer. Just to let you know, really, the whole idea behind this presentation, I think, was to put in front of you kind of the concept that we need to start, the county needs to start projecting these reductions in their planning. I know I think it'll be helpful for Wally to know that, okay, well, next year, if we apply for this grant, we're going to have to pick up 10% more of the cost on the county side. So when that grant comes before you for approval to submit to the CJAC committee, that you'll have that in the back of your mind, saying, "Yeah, we might get grant money for this project now, but next year, if we do it, we're going to have to pick up 10% more to submit the grant." And just to let you know, the 10%, it's not mandatory, but what happens is that if you're a grants applicant and you show up and you don't show that you reduced your request by 10%, then on the score sheet, you're kind of dinged on that part of the sustainability. So it jeopardizes your rating as far as all the grants. So it's not a mandatory thing, and we've told applicants that, "Look, if you're going to come and you don't show us that 10% reduction, you have to show us why you didn't reduce it by 10%." But again, the whole idea is to allow more applicants to come in, because as you're reducing the grant funds by 10% on the state side, you're making that money available to other grant projects that might come in that apply. Because as you can see, some of these projects have been going on for years and years and years, and what was happening, we have one grant project that was around for 20 years, they would come in, great project, it was, you know, got national recognition, but all these other grants that were applying couldn't compete with that type of project, because again, they had been around for so long. So again, the idea is to wean off those grant applicants that have been around for several years, to allow more room for other projects to come in.
Thank you.
If I can add to what Judge Gonzalez had mentioned. So let's say, for example, the DA's VAWA project was not recommended for funding for FY23. Not that it was not a good program, it's actually a model program. However, there's not enough funding. Under that fund source, we received $121,000 for our whole COG region. And so there's a lot of tough decisions that our CJAC members have to make, and so it's just not that it's not a worthy project, it's just simply is that the dollars are not theirs to sustain it. So should the DA's Office apply for FY23, then they come back at the 100%. It's only, the 10% reduction is applied for continuation applicants. So those applicants that were recommended for funding for '23, for '24, then they are going to have to go ahead and, well, they don't have to, but they are going to go ahead and have that 10% reduction shown on their budget. And if they don't, then there is justification as to why they did not reduce their budgets. Let's take, for instance, we were here for the court order for the Center Against Sexual and Family Violence. We had that new Senate bill for '67 or '76, because now they have a new service area for Hetsbuth and Coberson, they have to add more services. So because of the mandate that that bill, requiring them to provide services to those two jurisdictions, then that was a good cause as to why they did not reduce their budget for 10%. And so that is taken into account when the CJAC reviews their application, but there has to be good cause as to why they did not reduce their amount. So it is a really good thing that it is before the county, before the county Commissioners and the judge, and also with Wally, so you all can take those factors into consideration when these applicants, or when these applications come before you all for FY23, and start thinking about that sustainability. Just because we don't know what's going to happen, we were very fortunate with some of the victim of crime funding because of the Corona and the American Rescue Plan, we get some additional dollars that offset some of those cuts that some of those programs received in '21, but we don't know if that's going to happen moving forward. And so we just want everybody to be prepared and have a plan in place. These dollars go away tomorrow, how are you going to sustain the program?
Well, we love the no-match, right? But that's not forever, and so we're, no, no, we appreciate that we're anticipating that as we're going into budget, that that's going to be an additional cost on our budget, and then we have to, but you said, you know, each one can be taken on its own merits, like in your, Betsy, you were saying, right, that it'll be presented to us as, you know, it's just something that's viable. And as I said earlier, what I'm concerned about is that there's always, the risk is that a participant is sort of taken to a certain point, and then all of a sudden, they don't have the same protection or the same resources for them, and I think we have to be careful with that. So if there's any, anything else, Betsy? If not, I think this is very valuable. Of course, Wally, anything we can anticipate as we go into the budget, and the costs that we're going to have is very, very important.
Thank you, Judge.
Thank you, Ms. Quintanilla. Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Judge Gonzalez. Thank you. Caesar?
Item number seven, receive a presentation from the public defender regarding 2021 highlights and the status of the office and programmatic updates.
Judges, Kelly's coming up. I also wanted to share a few comments, and, you know, Joel's not able to be with us today, but he wanted to make sure that as we introduce Kelly in this presentation, we wanted to share a few comments and thoughts. As you know, Kelly was hired as our new chief public defender after a prior successful career in Illinois, and you may remember that her resume and career accomplishments were remarkable. Kelly's been doing an outstanding job as our chief, and she's received numerous internal and external compliments from her staff and our judges. We recently presented for the National Association of Criminal Defense Lawyers, I'm sorry, she recently presented for the National Association of Criminal Defense Lawyers Fall Program in Nashville, Tennessee. NACDL is the preeminent criminal defense organization in the country. They put on at least a dozen programs each year, each with 10 to 15 speakers, and Kelly's presentation was on using psychology to be more persuasive in court. The audience reviews and scores on Kelly were excellent, and she was named to their 2021 Best of the Best Speakers. They previously named Kelly to the Best of the Best Women Defenders in 2016, and Best of the Best Speakers in 2014 as well. We're very proud of the work she's doing in our office. We've recently received a lot of positive feedback about the improvements being made. And on top of that, I'll tell you, I had the pleasure of walking with Kelly at the Peter Herrera Memorial Walk, and all around, she's just an excellent human being and so fun to work with. And so with that, I'd like to turn it over. We're very proud of her and very proud of the work they're doing, and we want to provide these updates to the court.
Thank you. Great introduction, and I'm hearing the same thing, so that was very nice of you.
Wow. Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. Kelly Childress from the Public Defender's Office. I want to give you some updates about our office. This program really focuses on everything that happened in 2021. We had kind of a whirlwind year, so I want to go through some of that with you. Do I have control, or do I have to ask?
You can advance to advance.
Can we advance the slide, please? There we go. Can I not control it? I'm sorry? Point it this way?
It's the button on the right. If not, we can advance it for you. You can just let us know when.
Oh, now I'm moving too fast. Okay, sorry about that. Okay, so I wanted to talk a little bit really about this last statement in here. "We do not condemn, we do not judge, we do not reduce human beings to their worst act, we humbly serve." I think that is the heart of a public defender, and I am really sad that, you know, across our country, we are often mischaracterized. Our intentions, our value is frequently misunderstood, and I think that's because we're generally a pretty misunderstood group. We go into the courtrooms and we are bulldogs, we're vicious, and then with that, those vicious legal minds, we tend to have the hearts of social workers, and it's hard for some people to reconcile that we would do what we do if we were good people. And we hear these really sad comments even from, you know, world leaders, talking about why public defenders do what we do and what we really stand for. And it makes me sad, because the humility of our work is, I think, what people can't always get. People line up to help victims of crime. There are rooms full of volunteers, and there's grant funding, there's all kinds of things to help victims of crime. But I want to remind all of you, what I know you already know, public defenders are very rare, because I think it takes a really strong and humble person to help an offender. And when I say "help," I don't mean to help change them. I mean to truly stand next to them and hold their hand through very difficult things. And as often as we're not perceived appropriately by the public, we feel the same thing internally. Our own clients often don't even appreciate the work that we do, and that's where I say it takes a very rare person to last in this career. I don't think you have to be Christian to appreciate some of the lessons of the New Testament, and in the Book of Matthew, Jesus said, "What you do unto the least of my brothers, you do unto me." And that's really what we live by. We don't feast with kings and party with the powerful. We are more the type to share our table with sinners, with prostitutes, with lepers. We are more the the type to share our table with sinners, with prostitutes, with lepers. We wash the feet of those who welcome us with their presence. And I think it's important to understand that that's what sets us apart in this society. And I'm very grateful when I walk up and down the halls of our office to be just flooded with this positivity and this this love for humanity that I feel among those coworkers of mine. So we had a really big year last year. We started off in January with a total restructure. We we have a number of employees, I think we right now are at about 89 people, and we have multiple different divisions in our office, and that's how we were always set up. We had an investigations division, we had a social work division, we had misdemeanor attorneys, we had a felony division, and it was kind of disjointed. And I think over years, it led to maybe some dysfunction in our office, internal dysfunction, lack of communication, lack of maybe respect for the roles of other people in our office. So my number one goal when I got here, I think you're all aware that we were having some struggles internally, and I wanted to improve our communication and improve our ability to work together as teams. So we did a complete restructure and we created this system where we're not hierarchical anymore. We instead have multidisciplinary teams. Every team is a combination of misdemeanor and felony attorneys. They have their own investigations, their own social work, their own support staff, and they're really able to communicate. And it has streamlined our processes tremendously, and it's really caused, I think, much better efficiency and extremely better communication internally. And then around these teams, we have our directors, our executive team. So rather than having certain people that we do everything for, each director has to do your time off and and your trainings, and we have specialized directors who can kind of assist everyone within the teams. We've reduced our supervisors by about 40%. I think we were really top-heavy before, and and I think what that led to was a dilution of the supervisor duties. So instead of having enough people in court, supervisors just started taking more and more caseloads and weren't really acting as supervisors. So I think things are going really well. You will see me tweaking this a little bit over the years as we get feedback, but I think it's been a tremendous improvement for our office. Workloads in 2021. So this is kind of probably a little misleading because it was such a unique year. These were the numbers of cases that we opened, and we're going to talk in a minute about, you know, the the precharged cases versus charged cases. But overall, we had just under 10,000 cases opened in 2021. One of the things that I think is important for us to measure, and we will be watching going forward, is the time it takes to close a case once we've opened it, because that's a measure of our efficiency. Our felony averages for 2021 is a little higher than I'd like it to be, but again, it was a pretty unique year last year. A lot of things weren't moving quickly in court. I'm more concerned about our misdemeanors that is improving. Today's stats show we're slightly better than that. The reason this one is more concerning to me, while those cases should close on an average of more like six months instead of 11 months, added to last year, the DA's office was very generous in getting rid of cases that were low level, that we, you know, rather than letting them stack up and we would face a huge COVID backlog, they were generous with dismissing a lot of matters in the misdemeanor division. So that that combined with this number causes me concern there. So I am watching that. But overall, based on the circumstances of last year, I think we are able to move things a little somewhat efficiently through the system.
Kelly, just on the appeals, it just sort of jumps at you.
Yeah. Want to, oh, I'm in the wrong place. Here we go. Want to appeal last year. Well, when you think about it, what are we appealing? There's nothing to appeal until there's a court hearing or a trial. And in 2021, we didn't do any trials. We did very few contested court matters. Most things that happened were by agreement, such as pleas, continuances, a lot of things were continued for status through the course of the year, but we really only appeal when there's been a finding.
I was referring to the screen before that.
Oh, before this one? Oh, 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 okay. So the the timing on that is really out of our hands. Much of it is prior to the filing of briefs, but briefing schedules are determined by the appellate court, and either side can request continuances in that. But sometimes it takes maybe a year even before briefs are ultimately filed. And at that point, the matter will go up to the appellate court, and it can take, you know, anywhere from eight months to several years before it makes its way back. So appeals, I'm more concerned with the number of appeals that we're doing than the timing of them because it's so much out of our hands.
Okay, thank you.
So what we see here, the only places here that cause me concern, I mean, I'm very proud to say that that we assisted more than 5,000 clients who suffer from mental illness. Several years back, I believe it was about five years ago, we received a grant to start a mental health unit, and we have attorneys who specialize in working with clients who suffer from mental illness. So I'm, you know, there's a part of me that's sad that we see so many mentally ill clients coming through the criminal justice system, but I'm very proud of the work that they're doing. It's been a wonderful program. They are now, you know, fully entrenched into our teams, and they've been a tremendous asset to the rest of the attorneys who don't have such a specialization.
Kelly, to be clear, these are 55,360 individuals or one individual could be come several times to your attention?
I I'm glad you asked that. This here is separate clients.
Oh, wow.
So and and it, our statistics can get confusing sometimes because sometimes we look at clients, sometimes we look at cases. That's another thing that I've tried to streamline so that we're not artificially inflating our numbers.
That's a big number.
So when you look at the number of phone calls to our main number, that right there tells me that we were pretty busy in 2021. I mean, that averages out to approximately one call per minute during the hours that were open. So we're, we've rearranged to put some legal secretaries there helping our new receptionist. We didn't have a receptionist at all when I started, which is pretty amazing considering the the busy work at our front desk. But mitigation assignments, that's another place where, when I started, we had one mitigation worker, and our numbers were pretty high. 424 is far more than one person can handle. You granted us an additional position starting this fiscal year, and I was able to turn one of our former supervisor positions into another mitigation spot. So we now have a team of three.
And I'm sorry, Kelly, what's the mitigation?
I'm sorry, I shouldn't assume, yeah. So mitigation is the part of of a case traditionally where the court is going to be sentencing someone, and we want to provide evidence and and information that would make the court give a lighter sentence. It's the opposite of the aggravation that the DA's office would want to provide to say, give a heavier sentence because of these factors. So we have these these people who specialize in collecting this mitigating information. They talk to family members, mental health providers, educators, anyone in in the life of that client who can give them information that would make a better presentation when it comes to sentencing. So over probably the last 15 years or so in public defense nationally, mitigation workers are not just used for sentencing anymore, they're used pretrial because if we're able to provide those same, what we call mitigation packets, to the DA's office, sometimes we can get a better result without going to trial. So that's typically the use of mitigation workers now, as well as testifying after So you probably heard the phrase P-files, and if you haven't, you probably will. We have a problem with with these P-files. They're not reflected in the clerk's office data. So when when we research filed cases, they're not going to come up with those numbers. So they've been traditionally hard to track. We in our office have started tracking them pretty thoroughly, but these are cases where someone is arrested and then not charged with a crime until sometime later. And that's typically the process in El Paso, which is, to a degree, unique nationally, not super unique in Texas. It's it's different in other places, but similar. But in many parts of the country, you're not arrested until you have already been charged by the prosecuting authority or that prosecuting authority has interest, has indicated an interest in prosecuting the case. Then the police would make an arrest. What what we do here is people are arrested first, and then the DA has, by statute, in felony cases, up to 90 days to determine if they're interested in charging that person with a crime. Meanwhile, during that time, people sit in jail or are released on bond and have to comply with bond conditions. And and those numbers are growing. While our in-court cases are at reasonable levels right now, the numbers of people that are not yet charged with a crime but still subjected to either conditions of bond or actual incarceration are really, really high. As you can see, this, these are numbers that I pulled on a date in late December because I was trying to be reflective of 2021, and these are going up at a very rapid rate. Actually, I pulled the numbers Monday, and everything is up by about 14% over this.
Kelly, can I enter just for a second before I forget? In in looking at those people that are incarcerated and the case has not yet been accepted, are they not going through the DIMs program?
My understanding is that that DIMs has been reinstituted. I don't know exactly where the holdup is. I'm not privy to a lot of the information necessary to make those determinations. I I believe that there is a new DIMs agreement in place, but I can't say for sure how frequently it's being used. I know there are certain cases for which the the police have have come out and stated that they won't use DIMs for certain types of cases. But other than that, I don't know why they're taking so long.
And do you have access to the prisoners that are in 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 our in our jail? And and therefore, the clock has started, and are you looking at those specific cases?
Yes, sir. We are watching them very closely. In fact, I pull the numbers probably every week to look at where they are. Right now, we have about 300 uncharged cases in jail. And the impact of that is is pretty, pretty compelling. When you look at the the cost of that to the taxpayers, 300 people, that's just through my office, and we represent approximately 40% of of all criminal cases. So those 300 people end up costing the the county something like $9 million a year just in housing them at the jail for people who are not even charged with a crime. And that 300 is only a fraction of the people who are actually, you know, required to go through pretrial services. You know, our pretrial department is overwhelmed, their numbers are just crazy right now, trying to monitor all of these people who aren't even charged with a crime. And it's pretty sad to watch the devastation on the the human end of it. You know, we can count the numbers and things like that, but when you look at the impact on families, people's mental health treatment is disrupted, they lose jobs, they lose housing, they lose custody of their children. The ripple effect is just incalculable. So it's something that I am very much committed to, trying to work with my justice partners and and get that under control.
So somebody that's charged with a felony could be in our jail for 85 days, then realize that the case isn't going anywhere, it's dismissed, and he's been in jail all this time?
Unfortunately, that has become the norm for cases that are declined. They end up spending nearly the full statutory allotted time before those cases are declined.
Okay, thank you.
So one of the things that I'm really proud of for last year, I'm a big believer in continuing education. And education to me has a very broad definition, and and I frequently use, in our office, I use the term with my staff, evolution. I think we, as a group, must be committed to evolution, and that means you have to keep learning and keep learning, anything you can possibly learn. It doesn't need to be necessarily legal matters. But we have become an accredited provider of continuing education credits for attorneys in both Texas and in New Mexico. So we are able to put on programs in-house that will train not just our staff, but any attorneys who would like to join us in most cases. And then we're also doing one to two programs a year. Our goal is to do two, but so far, it's been one because we had some some hiccups with COVID in doing a spring program. But this last one on the list here, False Confessions, was our first public interest program. And we partnered with UTEP on that, and they provided a wonderful space that we could fit everyone, and they provided refreshments and all of the AV equipment, and we brought in speakers from all over the country, and we invited members of the public, members of the the court system. We had, registration was about 170 people, and then we had a lot of people who just showed up on site. But it was a really compelling program that talked about how people, you know, can start to understand that phenomenon of falsely confessing to a crime you didn't commit. So it was a very eye-opening program. We have one coming up, and I will be sending you more information as we get it. Our date is December 9th, and this program will be on wrongful convictions and their impact in society, not just the impact on the person convicted, the impact on victims, the impact on our system. And we typically will be doing these on on what's called the dead day at UTEP because they have the space and and parking available. So it will be one every May and one every December that will be an all-day public interest program. But all these other programs, we do Fridays, Friday afternoons, or we do over the lunch hour. Occasionally, we have a half-day program that we do as well. Yeah, and in 2021, we provided 35 hours of continuing education credits for, I don't even know how many attorneys, so at almost no cost. So we're really happy with the program.
When she brings these continuing educations, she doesn't just offer it to her office. She she makes it widely available to other attorneys.
That's correct. We have, we send the invites to all of the private bar. For most of our programs, we send it to the DA's office. Some are really defense-centered, and and we don't, in those cases, we send them to the judges as well. And like I said, we recently expanded to New Mexico because we're so close to Las Cruces, and I think it's good for our attorneys, investigators to to be able to interact more.
Excellent.
Automation and technology is a big one for us. It's really, really helping us along. I'm not going to read you these whole lists, but I'm going to flip through some slides of some of the things that that we have going on internally. This has streamlined our process unbelievably. I mean, we have found so many efficiencies, we've been able to eliminate thousands of man-hours in keeping spreadsheets and things like that. And and also, this has worked well with our new team structure, where people can automate assignments to other people within the team. So I'm I'm super proud. We have a Director of Legal Technology, a man named Chad Bernagie. He is, he is an attorney, but in his former professional life, he spent many years in the IT department at JP Morgan Chase. So he's got this amazing mix of of abilities that has really brought us far in this regard. So we look forward to more and more automation as as we move forward. And in addition, we've got this fantastic software that the county provided for many departments back in 2012, and a number of different departments utilize the software internally like we do, but this software has the capability of tremendous interfacing and things like that. So we're trying to work with some of our justice partners and get some more interest in in starting to build those interfaces so that we can see more system-wide, court-system-wide Team building is a big one. You know, like I said, when when I started, we had some social dysfunction within our office. So I think it's real important for us to work together on on our common goals, to learn to respect each other better, and and we're doing all kinds of things to bring people together, and I think we're seeing success. You know, COVID helped us in some ways, hurt us in some ways. Having a new chief come in, of course, people are going to listen to me and they're going to do the things I ask, but I hope I can keep the positivity going because I see a real 180 from from a lot of people in our office. We have put together, or I have put together a number of different task force within our office. So I'd like people to be able to find their little niches within the field of public defense and be able to make more more commitment to certain projects. So we have a number of projects that we're working on, and we're constantly adding new ones, and we put together groups of people who take an interest in it to try to accomplish these things. So we've been getting some good things done. I hope we have some real good things to report to you in the near future as well. Motivational guests. We like to bring in people who can kind of surprise my staff and and give them a little, you know, a one-hour chat over Zoom and and talk about, you know, the the power of teamwork and what's what success really means and things like that. We are very fortunate that we've had some really cool people join us on our Zoom meetings on Fridays to kind of give people pep talks and support us in the work that we do. We have a really cool one coming up, and I won't say a name because I don't want to spoil the surprise, but hopefully, within the next probably 60 days, we've got another motivational guest we will be inviting to one of our office meetings. We started giving annual awards, which I think is a big motivator for people as well. We do a Moving Mountains Award, which is given to a person who maybe doesn't have the greatest successes in court, or maybe doesn't have the highest level of cases, but really plugs away every day and gives their best to every client and every case. The Big Dog Award is our, you know, trial person, the person who goes in and makes everyone else afraid when they walk into the courtroom. The Minor Award, we give to social workers, mitigation specialists, or investigators. And the Wind Beneath My Wings is a Support Staff Award. You know, one program that you guys started long before I got here, the 48-Hour Bronze Program, that was in the works for some time, and it actually started about six months before I came to the county. Some of the data on that is really, I don't know if it, if the animation. We've really come a long way, and I'm super proud. Our office handles almost 100% of all the 48-hour bond hearings for the entire county, for everyone arrested, even on private cases. We have one person who does them all, and she's absolutely phenomenal. Maya Cavedo, remember her name because she is a rising star in our field. She's really, really amazing. She has achieved such incredible success in this program. What we're seeing is people who are ultimately going to be released on a PR bond anyway are being released much earlier. We used to average 36 days in custody before being released on a PR bond, a personal recognizance bond. Now, people are released at 12 days. And we're not exactly where we want to be. We're still working towards it, but I mean, that much of a change is a huge impact on our communities. And I'm super proud of Maya because actually, she won, a couple weeks ago, the Texas Association of Pretrial Services gave Maya the Bench and Bar Award for 2022 based on all the incredible work that she has done. And this is an award that will go to either one attorney or one judge in the entire state of Texas each year. And we're very, very proud of her because she really has, I mean, the, what she has achieved for our clients is, I can't even count it. So, I wanted to just point her out to you. And that's all I have.
Excellent. I'm so glad you recognize, two things that you recognize, and I wish we had known about Maya so you could have invited her to, you know, we'd help you recognize her as well. I think the, you said earlier of how little people know about your department, and I really appreciate that because the public sort of trusts to figure out, what do they do, or what's their role? And we thank you for that because the public can now understand that, and ourselves a lot better. So, I think it's an excellent introduction to what you've been doing and the department in general.
Thank you, sir.
So, thank you, Kelly. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Judge, in Kelly, you said something that's really important because you do hear a lot of things, even in the news media, that, "How can that person defend this person?" And it is. It's critically important. They're human beings also, and they deserve, as our Constitution states, a day in court. So, no, thank you for what you're doing. And as Betsy said earlier, I was acutely aware of some of the problems that were emanating out of that office before you arrived. So, thank you.
Great job.
Thank you.
That completes all the items on our agenda today, Judge.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you for all your work and everyone that's been helping. Our translators back there, thank you as well, and our production team back there. So, thank you very much. I wish everyone, it's too early to say a weekend, but we could start a good weekend. And as you could see, we had some very important topics that we're going to be working on, and I hope that the public does understand that we're trying to mitigate a potential situation in the best possible way. So, once again, thank you for that. Have a great day and a great weekend.
This concludes today's meeting at 12:05 PM.